Are you willing to do that, Woody?
I'm happy to do it as long as they get some assistance along the way.
I'm sure you'll be able to do that.
And the procedural matters.
I figured with one agenda item would be fun to test out the Robert's Rules when you don't do that often.
So, voice vote, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
If you can vote against yourself, put your still cheer.
I know he's got a lot of skeletons in his closets.
That's right. Uh-oh, what did we do?
All right, so Paul called me. All right, so I guess I will call this work session of the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, July 12th, to order. I guess we'll need to go do roll call first. We'll start to my left.
Paul Curtis.
Woody Gantina.
Mike Fournier, Mayor.
Tim Twain, Director.
Ann Bieke.
And Aaron Leal, City Attorney.
Okay, we'll see shortly. Sorry, that was Commissioner Douglas. I figured I'd answer that right while we're doing roll call just to, she had the same problem I had last time. We're programmed 7:00 PM and then 6:30.
I'm glad she'll be over.
So she'll be here shortly. She's going to run here.
Okay.
Maybe jog.
So now we can, I guess we will begin our review and discussion of the master planning consultant interviews. I guess I'll open it up to anyone who wants to start the discussion in terms of what their impressions of the three respondents was.
All I have that I, we have them available to look at on the screen if anybody wants to look at a particular segment or revisit any element of either of the three firms' proposals. Obviously, Mayor Fournier and Commissioner Bieke were not here at last month's meeting. Everyone had a chance to speak and certainly at the end of last month's meeting, encouraged to speak again, but I think it might be who has to hear what they have to say and hopefully they had an opportunity to skim again through the RFPs and watch some of those video clips of last month's interviews. So I would encourage the conversation to start on this end.
Sure. Thank you very much. And again, apologies for not being here last time and I did watch the meeting in its entirety and appreciated being able to do so with the video streaming. I guess my general impression and conclusions are kind of still aligned with my previous assessments as we've gone through the qualifications and then the RFP and then listening in on the interviews. My broadest conclusion I still come down to is I feel like at this point in time for Royal Oak and where we are, that DPZ would bring something to the table. I think that both brings a perspective as well as a global approach to planning that is, has been adopted more in other countries like Canada than the U.S. as far as smart growth and form-based codes and such. And also, the perspective of the transect, which I thought was interesting that both Mr. Casada and Commissioner Douglas brought up at the end of the meeting, I thought that was very appealing in the sense of looking differently at the three-dimensional experience of being between the buildings and what that means between the other things that are in the environment, which I think is a good perspective. For me, Smith Group, for a different set of reasons, was also somewhat appealing, but I still ranked them second in terms of providing options for participation, which they would discuss with us, as well as kind of the value-driven approach I thought was interesting and important. And then, and I had some other notes on it as well. And then, for me, Housel Levine was good, but I didn't feel like they were as connected to where Royal Oak is today and where it needs to go. And so for me, they're still kind of the third runner and I'd stay between DPZ and Smith Group from my perspective. Again, that's very general, but that's my general perspective at this moment. Thank you.
So for me, DPZ and Smith Group were the top. Housel, I think, interesting. You know, I don't know if I, I feel like their model's a little bit too fragmented. You have a lead consultant, whereas you can bring in all that expertise, which I think is really great. I feel like it might be a little bit, you know, too much for the, you know, where we're moving with the city of Royal Oak in terms of, you know, what we're going to need under one sort of roof of control. I like the bios a lot in Smith Group and I concur with Commissioner Bieke on DPZ's qualifications. I can't, I mean, pricing, they're all the same. There's no, you know, and not that that should matter unless one is, you know, like a trifecta higher than, you know, the other. Solid con plans with both. So, I mean, I would say that, oh, Commissioner Douglas. You know, if I had to sort of, you know, start the conversation, to me it would be, I think, all highly qualified, all really good proposals, all really qualified, but I would, I would be with Smith Group and DPZ to kind of narrow the focus down for me anyhow to get the conversation going.
So I will echo some of those thoughts. I thought DPZ, to me, did a really good job of, I think, understanding what our goals are, but more importantly, I thought they did a good job of outlining some of the challenges that they saw with sort of reaching those goals, which is something I thought the other two presentations were maybe lacking a little bit. Not that they didn't understand, but it just didn't come through in the presentation. Housel Levine, I thought they had a great presentation. One of the things that really appealed to me was the technology that they implement. One of the concerns I have along those lines, though, is I sort of got the sense that while all of it looked very nice and I think would be very helpful, I'm not sure that 100% of everything that we saw technology-wise is actually a part of the proposal and some of the more flashier items that looked nicer or, I think, some added cost. At the end of the day, I just, I'm not sure that they, that technology, if implemented, would help us to reach our goals, but I still think they're a highly qualified firm. Smith Group, to me, I've had some past experiences with them that left me wanting for more. I will say that. At the same time, I think they brought a lot of really good energy, being the last folks to present. I think they do have a good understanding of the local nature of what we're trying to accomplish here. However, I did get the feeling that, and this is maybe good or bad, I don't know, their approach didn't have as much structure to it and a lot of, for lack of better terminology, we'll kind of figure it out as we go, so to speak, which, to a certain degree, I think there's going to be elements of that in any three of these firms proceeding with the work. But, you know, if I had to rank them, I think I would rank them in the way that they had presented, which was DPZ, Housel, and now Smith Group, with caveat being Housel Levine and Smith Group being sort of 2A, 2B. I thought they were both very qualified firms, but both sort of left me a little bit wanting, whereas DPZ, I felt much more comfortable.
So can I ask a question? What are we trying to accomplish in the next X number of minutes? Are we, because I thought I heard some sort of pre-meeting discussion about we're not necessarily going to try to make a recommendation today. Do we need to talk about it if we're trying to make a recommendation today?
I think, I think at the workshop, we're, sorry, I think at the workshop, we still have the workshop because it's not, we can't have a decision in a workshop, but I think we probably, with that in mind, what we're going to do with two commissioners out, the Chair and Vice Chair, what we do for item one on the regular agenda. Sorry, I got some allergies today that are out of control. I don't know what's in the air, but it just hit really bad, so.
So the answer is we're just going to talk and not necessarily try to make a recommendation? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's my understanding. That is, this work session is for us to sort of share our thoughts out of last meeting.
Okay. So for me, you know, having read the proposals, having sat through the interviews and then having re-watched it on video again, just, you know, I'm trying, I guess I'm even stronger with DPZ seeming like the leader to me. They seem to have the breadth, the depth, the experience. I really love the team that's built out, including one of the state's leading economists. I thought was really an important component on that team. And so I guess, you know, just my take on it is they seem like the strongest firm in the bunch. That said, I, you know, don't want to talk bad about either of the other two firms. I think, I think all three of them can do the job, but given that we're trying to get the best job, that would, that's where I'm leaning. I think they could do the best job.
I'll just also add real quick, I'm not sure if the rest of the commissioners, where the DPZ is currently, I think in the final stages of working on Birmingham's master plan. And I did have an opportunity to speak with one of the Birmingham planning commissioners regarding their experience with DPZ and the work that they had done. And I was able to glean some good information and very positive feedback from them. Unfortunately, the biggest area of concern that I have with DPZ is their timeline, which was roughly half of what the other two proposals were. And I could not get very good feedback on the Birmingham project in the sense that they are, have, they are and have been working on that project through the COVID years, so any timeline that they stated was sort of out the window. But overall, I will say that the experience that Birmingham had with DPZ was a very positive one from what was communicated to me anyways.
Can I just follow up on that timeline? Just, so, yeah, the timeline, honestly, when I first saw the proposals, that really concerned me. The idea of, you know, half the time that the other two firms are proposing, how are you going to get, you know? But as I listened to them answer that question, because we asked that question, I was really like taken with the idea of, you know, momentum and not losing ground over time. The idea of having, you know, work sessions and building momentum and I kept asking about a dialectic and how important that is, I think, because, you know, as time goes, the feedback matures and becomes more sophisticated and meaningful, I think, as people start talking about something that ordinarily they don't talk about, you know, citizens, residents and citizens don't usually sit around talking about master plans, right? But the idea of getting it done inside of a time for a more intense timeframe made me think, aha, that actually could feed that sense of momentum more so than stretching it out and losing momentum in the gaps. So I thought that was a good answer.
If I can just add related to that, I recall and I rewatched a little bit again, that they did talk about the fact that it's not about spending fewer hours either, it's about actually the process going faster as you're suggesting and staying with some momentum. And again, having worked on the S-CAP and looking at, we're doing park master plan and a lot of different engagements, that I think all of those engagements should feed into this one. And again, for where Royal Oak is in this place and time, I say both, both the approach of the form-based and the walkability and the environmental aspect of what all of that means, but also adding on to it that idea of having that momentum and having a product move along quickly, I think, would be beneficial to us. And from their, I think, proposal response to the RFP, the idea that you send out first kind of an explanatory, this is how master plans work, this is what we're doing, this is what's going on, and then kind of a, another kind of, they showed like a mock newspaper. Then you mail that out and you say, okay, this is what we've learned, this is what we've committed to. I thought that was very appealing and I talked to the former mayor of Birmingham some weeks back and he was suggesting how surprised he was working with DPZ, and this is not this round, but I think they did the first version 20 years ago, that people really, the plan sunk in because it was messy and was visual and visceral, and then people referred to it and they understood, okay, we're doing this widening here because of this and we're doing this. And so I think that kind of, not that we're going to be like Birmingham, it's going to be based on our needs, but that kind of momentum and that people are seeing it, I think, is also appealing.
You might supposed to be calling on people.
Who's running this show?
I guess I am. Commissioner.
We're a little loose, we're helping each other.
I see. My apologies. I did look at the agenda and I thought, 7 o'clock, I'm going to be ready for this. So it seems like we're offering our comments on the proposals and I have some. So, and this is sort of, so, to me, I've written a lot of proposals, I've evaluated a lot of proposals, and to me, a proposal needs to be about us, about the client and their needs. The request, the qualifications request is about the bidder, because it's about them. So I kind of, that's the lens through which I looked at these proposals. Starting with Housel Levine, Lord, they have a vast experience across the country. I have no doubt that they are technically qualified to manage our master plan for us. But master plans are local and they had very tentative local connections. One of their consulting firms does some work, has done some work in Ferndale, but I just didn't feel, I think they need a local planning partner and they don't bring that to the table. And when asked what local issues they see affecting our community, their answer was like right out of a can. They talked about, and they named issues that affect all communities these days, aging populations, housing types and affordability, transit integration. I mean, those, every community across America, certainly across Michigan, is facing those issues. So I don't really feel like they had an intimate understanding of our needs and our challenges. DPZ has a local connection and that, you know, elevates them in my view. Certainly, they have the national reputation, the leadership really in planning for urban spaces like ours. You know, you talk about the transect, the transition from tall cities to medium towns to the countryside. They understand that places like this are the places that people want to live. As Paul said, I'm wondering about their eight-month timetable. So their approach, their thing has always been charrettes. They really pioneered the idea of charrettes and the use of them. And I'm not sure that that's the only answer anymore. I'm not sure if that tool is everything it once was. They spoke of the, what is it, the language of, language of drawing. And I think the charrette process, getting people to participate at that intense level in that short period of time in this day and age, when the demands on people's time are so great, I'm just not confident that we will have the depth of opinion from our community that other proposals will bring us. And it was funny, at our last meeting, Mr. Casada said something that I had already noticed, and that was in their presentation out here, they said they would not make assumptions. But their proposal said, quote, "Ultimately, the most significant update we envision is the replacement of the land use base plan with one that is transect-based and form-based." That's maybe true. There may be places in Royal Oak that lend themselves to form-based planning, but I feel like, you know, the old, when you're hammer, every problem is a nail, and I feel like they're the hammer coming in with a pounding solution to our problems. I have to say, the Smith Group, even before this all started, spoke the language that I, that I speak or want to hear when I talk about planning. I mean, first of all, they have local knowledge, they have one person on their team who lives here, they have another one who used to work in our planning department, so they come in loaded with knowledge. When asked about local issues, they mentioned diversity, equity, and inclusion, they mentioned sustainability, they knew about our Human Rights Commission and our sustainability plan. Interestingly, in their presentation, they mentioned the tension between old and new here in Royal Oak. And to my mind, that is where the master plan will, that's where the conflicts will be. We have people in this town who want to, you know, return to shopping at Fields and Woolworths. And there are people in this town who want growth and we need to find a way to ameliorate that tension and to build, the word that they use was trust, to build trust among people so that we have consensus. And I think they're the people who can do that. They have a communications consultant on their team, they're the only ones who do, and again, I'm a hammer, that's a nail, I think it's important to have communicators as part of your community engagement process. In fact, we're seeing that with our ARPA funds process, that is, the city manager is using a public relations firm, a communications firm, to help communicate what that's going to be all about. Yes, the other two firms have more extensive national resumes. That just means they've done this a lot, not that they're better at that or not that they're right for Royal Oak. And at the end of the day, this is an all-Michigan firm, and I like keeping our money here in Michigan. That's my case.
Anybody else on this side of the table that wants to share any comments? All right, with that, I'm going to open the public comment section of this work session. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on master planning consultants? All right, with that, I'll close the public comment portion of this. We've got a couple minutes left of this work session. We can, I guess, briefly discuss now, then, as we get to the regular meeting agenda, whether or not we want to take a vote on it later today or if we want to potentially postpone it. Obviously, it's a decision for the regular meeting. I guess I'll get my thoughts out there. I would prefer that we have the full commission here to vote on it, but certainly happy to hear everyone else's thoughts as well. Mayor Fournier?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we need another work session per se. I think it sounds like everyone's pretty informed and has at least an opinion, you know, just in a quick tally in my brain, so we're settling in on a, honing in on a couple. The other two folks, I mean, I think they'll be prepared for a discussion if we want to make that decision at another meeting. So I think the decision to move to a different work session, I don't know if that's what we need to do, but definitely, not that we make a decision in the work session, but I would think that based on what I hear tonight, we're probably getting close to making a recommendation for the city commission, and I think that would be able to happen at, you know, the next meeting maybe.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I think both Commissioners Casada and
Closter.
Closter. Have strong, are going to have strong opinions on this subject and care enough about it to watch our discussion and hear what we have to say and then share their own thoughts at the next meeting.
Yep. Mr. Curtis?
Thank you, sir. Now, just again, a question. So I'm fine, by the way, with voting next meeting, you know, having a, trying to make a recommendation next meeting, that's fine with me. My question is, how would we go about it? For instance, if there's three, would it be interesting to folks, just a question, to do like a ranked vote to eliminate one? You know, if you went 1, 2, 3, and, you know, a 1 vote got 1 point, and 2 vote got 2 points, and 3 vote got 3 votes, the 3 points, then the highest point drops off and then you have 2 to choose from. Or would we just make, somebody make a motion, see if somebody will second it, and what's the most sensible way to make that decision as a board, you think, as a commission? I don't know.
I mean, to me, some kind of ranked voting is appropriate, and I also feel like a little additional discussion would be also appropriate since we've had kind of now two disjointed discussions, but still haven't had the whole group together. Because I think the ranked voting would get us to 2, and then we should discuss the final 2 a little bit more thoroughly. And just following up on what you were saying, well, I agree that Smith Group has that local experience and I do think that's extremely valuable. Equally valuable, I think, is to push ourselves here to look at global experience and best practices, and we tend to, I think, disregard that and not like to push, and I do think we need to start leaping forward, again, especially on climate issues and walkability and providing that choice. Again, what I heard from DPZ was, again, looking at the region and going down and acknowledging our very different, they're very diverse neighborhoods and accommodating them. So anyway, so I just think that is also of value. And they have McCann on the team, which kind of dovetails with the park plan. Anyway, so I agree with the ranked voting and I'm okay to vote next time as well.
Mayor Fournier?
Yeah, I think with that recommendation, I mean, it could be as easy as, you know, you can't really make a, it'd be complicated to do a motion that would be like, you know, give me your rank. You know what I mean? Like, that's not a vote, but what we could do is maybe get a whiteboard or on a piece of paper and tally it up. You know, we just go around commissioner by commissioner, you know, 3, 2, 1, 1, 2, 3, you know, 2, 3, 1. And then we can look at the numbers and then, from there, I would, I mean, if it's glaringly apparent, someone can make a motion. If it's not, then maybe more discussions necessary. So I like the idea of the rank because I, you know, I have sort of a 2, or 1A and 1B and then, you know, a 3. So I think it'd be interesting to do the ranked voting. Not ranked voting, but ranked ordering and then seeing what that looks like.
As far as procedure's concerned, okay, we do the ranked voting also just by email and come with the tally to the meeting? Or is that not allowed?
No, that would be an open meeting type violation.
Oh, I see, okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
This is why we need our chair here.
That's why you need your attorney.
Definitely. Yeah.
Okay, there is no more discussion on this, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn the work session.
I would move to adjourn the work session.
A second.
All right, Commissioner Curtis moved to adjourn this work session, seconded by Commissioner Bieke. I guess, can I just take a voice vote on this? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? None? All right, the work session is adjourned. And are we able to just move into our regular meeting now at this point? Okay, so, making deference to Mr. Casada here, so now is the time and place for the July 12th City of Royal Oak Planning Commission meeting. It is 7 o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. First, we'll take roll call to my left.
Oh, yeah, Paul Curtis.
Woody Gantina.
Aaron Leal, City Attorney.
Mayor Fournier.
Tim Twain, Director, Community Development.
Charlene Douglas, City Commissioner.
Ann Bieke.
And so before we get into the agenda, I will ask if there are any changes to the agenda that anyone would like to propose. Hearing none, we will move on. Next item is the approval of minutes for the June 14th, 2022 meeting. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to read the minutes. Are there any adjustments or changes to the minutes that people would like to talk about?
I move approval.
I second.
All right, with that, I'll take another voice vote for the approval of minutes for June 14th. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The minutes have been approved. All right, so next on the agenda is the time that we hold for public comment on non-agenda items. So if there are folks in the audience that are here to speak on something that is not on the current agenda, now is the time for you to do that. You have 3 minutes, and please come to the podium, state your name and where you live, and let us know what you have to say. Please come forward.
Hi, good evening. I'm Cassie Regio. I live at 1403 Smith Avenue, Royal Oak. Not on the agenda, it's hard to keep up with you guys, haven't watched much on TV lately, but I just want to say a few things. Unqualified people are serving our city. People come in and they, you want to have people come in and be on a commission or a committee that don't live here? That's pathetic. You have to know what's going on in your city. I've lived here for 77 years, my grandmother, you know that. We need people in our city, consultants, you're paying consultants. Why are you up there? You are, aren't you smart people? Can't you pull city and people in from the city and make decisions without outsiders and paying consultants that could actually help? Now, I know, I'm a senior citizen and I always thought, it doesn't matter what we look like. I look like Natalie Wood from head to toe. This is my gray hair now, I earned it. You're not respecting the citizens. I am not, I am the least, I don't have any racism in my body, I would never think of anybody other than what they are, not their color, their gender, age, anything at all. I am not prejudiced. But we're doing things in this city that are indoctrinating our children. Whether I can go, and I don't care what adults do, adults can do what they want. You know, the greeting to the kids over there, you know what I'm talking about? Adults can do what they want. Why would you have children go there and do that? That is ridiculous. These children are our future. They have these minds, you're destroying their minds. We need these kids to be innovators. My grandfather was a consultant on the Hoover Dam, he worked with Thomas Edison. You are destroying their minds. You bring drugs into the city. Most of those people that have done the shootings have found out that they have been on marijuana, and I've told you many, many times. Kids are dying from fentanyl. It's our responsibility. You were younger than I am, you guys have a responsibility. Quit filling your pockets with money. You don't need to keep giving these contractors money. This is a beautiful, this was, this city could have made it on, on the news as the all-American city. I could do, and they sit at the art beach and eat, the guy said, and somebody voted for the pot tent? Guess what? He said, oh, they didn't have any trouble in San Francisco. Well, if Well, if you don't know about San Francisco, you do not know what's going on in the world. Please protect our city, it's an all-American city. Two students did a movie, you know that, right? It was in the, it was in the Park Review. They did a movie, they got an award. Could we show it here at the main theater? Could the people here go and see it? Could the kids see it? No. Because you've got the corrupt former mayor and his designs and climate change. If you want to do climate change, call Kim Jong-un. Tell him to quit shooting off the missiles. He's destroying it, he's destroying it. Our climate change, the kids have to be taught what's right. I wish I could say more. I know, I know, I'm probably a pain and you know what, but you know what? I will not stop. These kids, you are destroying the kids. You have a responsibility, they are not adults, even the teenagers. Set an example. Don't say, oh, I gotta sell this, I'm gonna put money in my pocket. Maybe I should bring wheelbarrows in for all of you if you're taking money. Think of the people that lived here. This could have been an all-American city that we need in our country. God loves everybody, we are prejudiced. Don't bring people in and say, oh, the one person said. She said. Oh, well, Royal Oak's not diversified. How the heck does she know? How does she know? Keep starting trouble at the schools. Keep pitting those kids against each other that love each other. They don't care what color they are, they don't care what religion they are. There may be a few, but you know what? Then the parents better get contacted, and they better pull those parents in and get the kid out of the school. And these kids need to be, if something's shown in the school that they're changed, they've changed, and something's going on, have a counselor, tell a counselor. And if they find nothing's wrong, no harm done. If they found something's wrong, if they found something's right, no harm done. If something's wrong, if something's wrong, get the kid help. So will they save?
I'm about to have to wrap it up, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, bye. Protect the children, forget the task force and their consultants.
Are there any other members of the audience that are here for public comment on non-agenda items? Not seeing any, we will move on with the next agenda item, item D, which is new business. Item one, which is recommendation on the master plan consultant city commission. There's been some brief discussion on this already. I'm not sure if we need to have additional discussion, but if there's more thoughts that anyone wants to share, please let me know, or I will entertain a motion.
I move to postpone the discussion and the motion on the master plan until the next meeting.
Support.
Ms. Beke moved to postpone the recommendation on our master plan consultant to our next planning commission meeting. Commissioner Douglas seconded that. I'm gonna take a roll call vote for this one, just to make sure we're all good here. Mr. Curtis?
Aye.
I'm BS.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, passed unanimously, so we will essentially table that until our next meeting, which is, what's the date on that?
August 9?
August something.
Is it August 9?
August.
9, is that right?
Second Tuesday in August.
Okay, so moving on to item number two of new business, public hearing, special land use permit and site plan to construct in addition to community college, Oakland Community College for a culinary arts institute, including restaurant with alcoholic beverage service and outdoor seating area at 700 Main Street and 737 South Washington Street. Mr. Twing, I will hand it off to you to
Certainly. As you indicated, you do have a request for you this evening to construct a new facility, a new building, basically a three-story building, although the height varies between 70 feet and other heights in total. It's a little over 78,000 square feet in area. As you indicated, the purpose is for the community college's Culinary Arts Institute. The reason it's in front of you as a special land use this evening is because of the liquor license that they've requested, and this was in front of the city commission, and was approval, as well as the outdoor seating area that is included and proposed. Both of those under the zoning ordinance are special land uses. So that's the reason for the special land use public hearing. For those two items, the school itself is a permitted use in the central business district. Terms of parking on the site, with the addition, staff calculates, they would need somewhere in the neighborhood of 870 spaces. According to the site plan and their existing parking, they have a little over 1,156. So they are in compliance with the parking standards under the ordinance. Couple items that are for the planning commission's discretion are in regards to building, design, and placement. You'll see in the report that we've outlined the heights to weight, heights to width ratio that's in the ordinance is limited to one to three. The proposed building, the north facade along West Street, or West Seventh Street, excuse me, is slightly over that at a ratio of one to 3.68. That's a discretionary item for the planning commission to consider as you look at that facade and whether it meets the intent of the ordinance. Secondly, the ground floor area in the CBD are required to have window display, pane areas under the ordinance. That same facade, the north facade, has a length of about 257 feet, but only approximately 25 feet of that is depicted. And the ground floor is as window openings. So those are the items that are kind of discretionary in your review. In addition, some zoning code requirements that you should consider as you look at this site plan. The entrance to the loading, proposed loading area on the northwest corner of the building. The building does set in the 10-foot triangle setback that's required for visibility when exiting onto a public right-of-way. You do, again, have the ability to either say it's sufficient and waive it as, or approve it as submitted or require modification. Probably two of the bigger items for discussion this evening are the proposed location of that loading bay. You'll see in staff's report, as well as the site plan recommendation, is that the planning division staff is recommending that that loading bay access point onto Seventh Street be removed and be put within the interior of the site and be redesigned so that loading and unloading are vehicles that won't back in over the public right-of-way, won't use the public right-of-way to maneuver, and that should occur on their, on their own property. So that's one recommendation that the petitioner, obviously from the submission, doesn't want to follow. If it's left in its current location, the width of that driveway exceeds the 30-foot maximum at the property line, and you would need to also grant permission to seek that variance from the zoning board of appeals. It's approximately, I believe, 36 feet, and the maximum is 30 feet. One other item is in regards to the landscaping slash tree replacement provisions. You'll see in the report that their proposed development would eliminate some 319 inches of diameter of trees. They are proposing to put back 16 trees with about 40 inches on the plan. Based on the ordinance requirements, they'd either have to plant another 112 trees at two and a half inches or pay the fee in lieu of planting those to the tree fund. And based on the fee establishment of $200 per inch, that amount would be $55,800. Additionally, in terms of the streetscape, planning and engineering division are recommending that the plan be modified to follow the standard streetscape pattern along Main Street and along Seventh, and that the planner boxes be removed or placed back on the petitioner's private property. I believe those are all the items referenced in the planning division's report under the special land use. Most of those are echoed in the site plan memo, so I won't go through that right now and see if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Commissioner Douglas?
I should have said this earlier, I hadn't thought about it. Mr. Liao, I serve on the Board of Trustees of the Royal Civic Foundation with the OCC Chancellor, Mr. Provenzano. Does that create a conflict of interest?
You do have an ethics ordinance, and I'm trying to recall the provisions on that.
I'm sorry, I should have thought of this and asked you in advance, it just dawned on me.
If they can continue with, I guess, the questions, the Commissioner, Tim has done with his presentation. Commissioners have questions for him, I will look that up on the ethics ordinance. We do have one, and I don't believe that you do have one, but I want to verify that.
Okay, thanks. Then my other question, Mr. Twing, is the plans that we see in front of us show the parallel parking, or show the angle parking on Seventh Street going from west to east when I believe that parking is east to west, unless something's going to change?
It'll need to be the reverse back-end parking when the meters are installed?
Ah, got it, okay, thank you. That's all for now.
I have a quick question. There was some discussion in the staff report regarding vacation of some public alleys and some related items. Based on some of the information that I read in the staff report, is it, my understanding that all of those have been dealt with at this point, are there still some property vacation issues that need to be figured out still as part of this?
The county's record is still showing it is open. There is some indication that we've received that it has been vacated. I think our discussion at this point is just a confirmation that it has. So it's just a contingency to make sure that it has been vacated, and then that it get recorded as such. We don't have any objection to it, we just want to make sure it's dealt with.
So along those lines, there's an additional question I have, I guess, regards to the easements for some utilities that run in that alley right now. In some of the, in the package that we received, there was discussion around, as if those, to confirm that the alleys were vacated, which you had just addressed. One of the questions or concerns I have with regards to the utility easements and the utilities that are there, are they only serving this property? So if those easements were dissolved and those underground utilities removed, it's not necessarily affecting any other properties?
Well, I can't answer that specifics, but if, either way, they'd have to be relocated before the building could go over those utilities.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Twing? Ms. Beke?
I tried to look it up and make sure I understand correctly. Does our downtown have different sidewalk widths that are within our zoning, different than the neighborhoods or not? I can't remember, I hope it does, I hope they're wider, but I can't remember if they are specifically.
Well, the sidewalk widths are a factor of how wide the public right-of-way is in general, and how much of that is taken up in either travel lanes or parking lanes. Obviously, Seventh Street is a much narrower street than Main. So in order, and part of the reason it's configured to go westbound only is because of proximity to the railroad. But there is no specific standard for a sidewalk in the downtown. A lot of them are over 15 feet, some are 13 feet, some are much narrower.
Some are five. But anyway, okay, just wondering what that was in, in range, thank you.
Chair, if I may, I just wanted to get back. I quickly reviewed in the way your ethics ordinance, or the city's ethics ordinance is structured. It targets it, the key part, or the most important part, is if whether you are receiving some type of financial benefit as part of your position in this, in this Board of Trustees that you mentioned. If that is not the case, then there would not be a violation of the standards of conduct as found under ethics ordinance.
That is certainly not the case.
Okay.
So thank you.
Mayor Fournier?
Yeah, I'm dimensionally challenged tonight, so can you kind of explain the loading dock situation and highlight it again for me? Is the concern that it's simply crossing the pedestrian right-of-way? Or is it that when the vehicle, the trucks, you know, 52-foot trailers, whatever they're gonna have, if they're backed in while they're unloading, they'll be over the right-of-way, essentially blocking the sidewalk? Or is it just?
Well, the movement that, I guess, generates the objection is, in order to get into the loading bay, you have to pull up Center Street
Yep.
and back into it.
Okay.
Crossing the public sidewalk with that sort of movement, which we've generally not allowed. And then it also impacts the crosswalk from Center to the south side of Seventh that wouldn't exist any longer. And then as well as you're pulling out, that we referenced the site angle. So it's the fact the building comes along the property line and it's crossing versus there is room to do it on-site and avoid that conflict.
All right. I think I understand.
Any other questions for Mr. Twing? It does not appear so. I believe the applicant is here, I would like to invite them up to present their project.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm actually thrilled to present this project that's been a few years in the making. My name's Peter Provenzano, I'm chancellor at Oakland Community College. And, you know, as I was reflecting on my way here, I was thinking about several years ago when we started this project and we really talked to the Board of Commissioners, we were thinking about really four themes. And I was thinking about a presentation tonight, and really what you're going to see is that we've really held true, I believe, to all four of those themes along the way. First, we felt that there had to be this wow factor to this building. And I have to tell you, every time I see a picture of it, it brings a smile to my face. I know we've worked really hard on it. But it was important to us that we had that wow factor, that as you're driving down Main Street, you're walking down the sidewalk on Main Street, that you look at our facility and you say, wow, what is that? Also, when you look, we tried to raise the elevation, it's three floors, as mentioned. That was important to us because as you're downtown Royal Oak on Main Street and you're looking to the south, the idea is that you look down Main Street and say, wow, what is that? And you see some of the activity that's happening down there. We also wanted to be connected to the community. And one of the things that I talked several years about, years ago about, is this idea of a college town, that when you come close to our complex here in downtown Royal Oak, you know that OCC is located here in Royal Oak. And that was really important to us as well. And that was really the whole reason that we're bringing the Culinary Institute from our Farmington Hills campus to downtown Royal Oak, because we really wanted to be connected to the community. It really allows us, because of the location of being an urban campus, to open up the arts, make the arts as well as culinary more accessible to the community. I was thinking about the views inside and out. Those have always been really, really important to us. And what do I mean by that? As you're walking down the street, as you're driving down the street, to be able to see the activity that's going on in our Culinary Institute, our restaurant on the top floor, to see, you know, events that are happening and be really excited about the things that are happening downtown Royal Oak. But the opposite is also true. When you're in our building, it's important to us that, you know, if you're here for an event or you're in a classroom, that you're looking out, and you have an opportunity to see the beautiful landscape that you've all worked so hard to create here in downtown. And balance all of that really with flexibility. One of the things that we decided to do as part of this process is to go through a master plan for our entire campus. And we're glad we did that because we are building this Culinary Institute in a way where it allows us to expand in other areas. where it allows us to expand in other areas, to really think about the next ten to fifteen years and what do we want that campus to look like? We want to make sure that everything, that what we do for the Culinary Institute allows us the flexibility to grow. One of the things I know you're talking about today is the, the loading dock, and I wanted to talk a little bit about that. Where the loading dock is right now on Main Street, as well as that, I'll just say it, that ugly building, which is our utility building that's on Main Street, those, the loading dock and the utilities are fully functional for us. They're fully, they're, they're operational for us. But one of the things that we heard from the city commissioners was, would you consider moving those? And so our plan does just that. We are prepared to invest heavily to take that utility building, take it down, and hide all of our utilities for the entire campus inside of this building so you no longer see the utilities. And it's taking up the majority of our first floor, but we think it's worth it. The loading dock, we looked at, you know, strategically what the best place was to put it. If it's not, if we weren't going to keep it on Main Street, we really were looking at Seventh Street and came up with the best possible scenario for the loading dock as well. Today, I have our team from Oakland Community College, as well as our architects from HED. We have a brief PowerPoint presentation that we'd like to walk you through that might answer some of your questions. And then we are here to answer any questions that you may have. So I suppose without further ado, I'd like to bring Tracy from HED up here to walk through that presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to have the opportunity to show you some images, so to the, the point of being dimensionally challenged, or some of us just can picture things a little bit easier with some imagery. I'll start out with what four win-wins, both for OCC and for the City of Royal Oak, and then move more specifically into some of the items that were brought up that were questioned and that we've been responding to, to help you understand why things were planned the way that they were, and to give you a little bit of a perspective in instances where we say perhaps maybe we're looking at going a different way than some of the recommendations, to help you understand really what the thought was behind that. I want to make sure I'm directing it to the right person, who's actually controlling. Okay. So then I can at least look at you when it's time to move forward. So we can go ahead and move forward into the beginning of the slides. Again, as I said, I'd like to start off-
Could you just introduce yourself?
Yes, absolutely. Tracy Sweeney from HED. And I have a couple of other members here from HED. We've got landscape design represented, some additional architectural design, our studio head, as well as civil representation. So we've got plenty of folks here that can help answer your questions. As we move forward, kind of just pulling these through really quickly, again, the first big win is that issue of first impressions. We've talked about that entryway. If you go to the next one, it's, it's worth showing it and reminding everybody on the next slide what that actually looks like. So again, not the first front door impression that we're looking for. Unfortunately, our back door is your front door for Royal Oak. And so there's been a lot of effort put into taking a look at ways to alleviate that challenge. As we look in the next slide, we can start to see what it will take to move those functions into the site for the new building. So really, when we think about the first floor of a culinary institute, there are a lot of things when we started the programming, programming that you might think about putting into the first floor of a building. You know, sort of instantly you think about, well, maybe that's the banquet center, or maybe that's a big student gathering space, or maybe it's something that ties into the heart of the campus. As we looked at what it would take to move those items off of Main Street, think about really the functioning pieces of the building, the thing I want to point out on this floor plan is that both the green and the pink spaces, everything along that solid wall we talked about earlier, in terms of having kind of no windows on the north face of that building, the green and the pink items are the receiving, they are the power plant, they are all of those pieces that are being relocated. And so to really understand the level of investment that OCC is putting into making that move and improving the front door of the campus, you can see that it's very significant there on the first floor. As we move to the next image, here we're seeing the, the sort of white square that shows the opportunity to eventually, once the new power plant comes online, demolish some of those items in the future and future steps of the master plan, redevelop that section along Main Street and really have that new face. So we're seeing the new green building popping in there. It's really a focus not only on visuals, but also on alleviating some issues of safety and congestion that having that service traffic coming directly in from Main Street creates for the site. So you can go ahead and go to the next one. Really, we're focusing here on the next big wins together. We're looking for the campus to be a great civic partner. And then again, as the chancellor was excited about really adding visible energy to the street scene, making the campus something that's active with the street life and really extending downtown to the site. So if we go to the next image here, we're indicating the pink as the site that we are talking about for the new Culinary Institute, the kind of the northeast corner of that site. The black areas, of course, we've got the railroad running through, we've got some other things that are mediating between that and downtown. But really, this becomes the anchor site for the end of downtown. It also connects, as we know, to the west. It's kind of the turnaround site for those big civic moments like art beats and eats. So you're coming from downtown, you're arriving at the campus, that's the point at which you actually turn around and re-engage and connect with the Washington corridor. And so this really sort of highlights for us the importance of this campus site within civic activities in Royal Oak. And so as we talk about the opportunities on the site, maintaining focus and OCC's role in continuing to participate in those civic activities, whether it's outdoors or whether it's in the configuration of the building, was something that's very important for the This is one of my favorite ones. If I could add glitter to a PowerPoint slide, this would be the one that I would do it. You can see the challenge on this site is that we always have a site in the round, correct? There's no back door. There's no good place to put the stuff that you don't want to see. And so up until this point, the front door of the campus has actually been on what we would sort of consider to be the wrong side. It's on the side of Washington and Lincoln, right where kind of the connection to the parking deck is. So that's, the strength of the connection has been students park, they get into campus, and it's rather introverted in terms of how things are organized. The big explosive indication here on the northeast corner is really the difference or where you start to see the difference. And that's where you see the biggest impact of the building. But it's not just the building. It's not just the three-story construction. It's not just the glass. You see the building pushed back a little bit in the site plans, and it's creating a public engagement plaza there at the corner, which is an arrival point and an engagement point that we've never had for this campus to tie into Royal Oak. Also, we can look at that green corridor that ties right from that corner and brings folks into campus. So again, when we think about that as the turning-around point for civic events like art beats and eats, you can see how the green space of the campus and sort of the center of that becomes very important and becomes an amenity for the city as well as for the campus. And then we see kind of to the west of the building, an indication of a flexible lot that can be used for drop-offs. So this is helping you with, you know, not having so many folks trying to drop people off on the Main Street side. This is also helping you with flexible permeable pavement and the opportunity to use it for handicap parking, to use it for campus needs during the average day. But when that big event comes around, that parking lot could also be converted to outdoor event space to help with civic engagement. So just a couple of pieces of the, the site plan that really get us excited. We'll take a tour through the outside images here, just in case anybody hasn't had the opportunity to see why we're so excited about the building. The first one is, of course, looking at that northeast corner. So this is the tall piece. This is the piece that across the lot, across the train tracks that you see from downtown with that signature sort of student-run restaurant piece up at the top. It's nice because it's not necessarily at the street level, competing with other restaurants in downtown. That's not the purpose of it. It's part of the curriculum, and it's also part of kind of tying visually together with the street scene. As we go through the other images and we can kind of scroll slowly through them, we see this is the Main Street side, so you're getting sort of those differences in materials. Materiality has been very important for OCC, looking at the colors and the materiality of culinary. We've had a lot of jokes and a lot of names for those kind of champagne panels on the campus. And as we've referred to it, of course, this is part of a master plan. And so thinking about for that first phase of a master plan, how do we start to set up a palette of materials that becomes something we want to build on? What is the future look of the campus? What types of materials? What types of colors? Are we looking for neutral? And here, really building off of those colors of culinary gives us the whites, gives us the grays, gives us things that we can start with a very neutral palette and build moments of excitement into. And of course, we're still working with the verticality of the materials. So for now, until we're able to move forward into future master plan phases, the forms of those materials still go what, with what remains and with the stuff that we haven't been able to touch yet. Coming around to the other side here, you see sort of a signature gateway arch that's for pedestrians, kind of welcoming, welcoming them into that green pathway that we showed earlier. And again, that very glassy all the way around the whole Main Street side, although we have all of those elements on the first floor that we can't get away from a solid wall along Seventh Street, really focusing on visibility into the building for all aspects of the Main Street facade. This is an important one to look at because this gives you a sense, just beyond the green screen, that is where we're looking into that loading dock configuration. The important thing here, we have so many things going on at different times. We've got some truck traffic, maybe only one or two trucks a day, so not massive traffic. But as we look at it, we understand that we also have trash to deal with on the site. And that type of courtyard that's within the building can help to conceal the trash, it can help to conceal the service traffic, it can help to conceal facilities traffic. So really, having all of those things not bear a major impact on the green space on the center of campus and not bear a major impact for neighbors to the site. And here, we're kind of standing in that multi-flex lot that I talked about that's closer to the center of campus, looking at that alternate drop-off location. So really providing a lot of flexibility there and showing the greenness and the activity of the center of campus where we really just have a little bit of passenger traffic, but we have fully separated the surface traffic from the passenger traffic. So you don't have that crossing of big trucks and passenger cars and pedestrians in the center of campus. Really keeping those flows separate seem to be the thing to do to focus on safety for the flexible use of the center of campus. So here, just taking a look at some of the transparency, looking at how it affects street life, et cetera. So really, just in terms of those big wins, mostly the, the very last one that I want to touch on is the future focus. I've mentioned a couple of times that we're in the middle of a master plan effort here. And really, as we look at this site, the circulation within the building, so the corridors of the proposed building, were set up very intentionally to be able to connect to potential future development on the campus. So again, we're in Phase One, but looking forward to what Phase Two or Three or Four might be. This is not a diagram that says we're definitely committed to putting buildings in particular places, but you can see the red line that extends out of the building and into the area where the lot and the connection to other buildings might be. You can see the connection from the circulation across the Main Street side. And you can imagine that the banquet center that we didn't quite get into the building this time could take one of those locations in the future. So really, starting to think about how the use of the site enables OCC to continue investment into this site for the next ten years and beyond. So as we think about how we're actually using the open site spaces, we're always keeping that peace in mind. So really quickly, but I'll take as long as I need to, any questions that you might have relative to the actual subject questions of the review? We wanted to go through and show a couple of the things that we considered in the design and why they have bearing on questions that might have been asked during the review process. The first two is dealing primarily with the question of the massing for the building. So we talked about the one to three ratio. The intent of a ratio like that is to help control the feel of the building, the size and the height. And so as the development of the exterior of the building progressed, you can see a couple of lines drawn here. We understand that it's going to be a large building. And so part of the strategy to help break that down and give it the scale, that's the intent of the ordinance, is to do it in sections. So you've got that front section, let's kind of look at the, the sloped roof there for the, the part that's seventy feet tall. That's about seventy feet long. That chunk of the building clearly falls within the intended ratio. The section of the building beyond that, that is a little bit shorter, gives some visual relief, and that chunk of the building is also within the intended ratio. So although if you take the, the ultimate height and the ultimate length of the whole building, we're slightly over the ratio, there's been a lot of effort put into providing variation within the facade and using the tools of kind of that solid wall as well versus the glass area that you can see into, to provide the intent of the ordinance, which is really kind of just creating something that interacts with the street and doesn't overwhelm it. At the same time, we're talking about that solid wall. I'm referring back to the plan that I pointed at earlier. Those pink and green spaces are things like power plants, storage rooms for receiving, things like that, that you don't really necessarily want to have views into with windows. And so that's why the views are focused on the Main Street side, turning the corner, lots of activity right there on the active part of the street. And accepting that part of the trade-off of moving all the stuff you don't want to see on Main Street is that we still do have to hide it somewhere. And so part of that solid wall solution is sort of the trade-off in getting that over to the other part of the site. Another challenge that we need to face, and it was not one that I initially thought of, but then I started to think back a couple of years to when I was living in the North Oak Park section and we had all the floods. And there's always things that you might potentially have to deal with that come from outside the site. There is flooding potential. You see sort of the blue line that is coming from the north side of the site. There is some flooding potential, and so we had to, to set the finished floor of the building a little higher than we ordinarily would. Seems to make sense. No big deal, move forward. But that is sort of the driving factor that starts to affect some of the other points that came up. We talked about sort of the setback of the building from Main Street. We talked about those planters in front. And if we look at the next image, I think it shows, yes, this one. So the issue of whether we can have the square planters, what we're actually doing with the plaza in front, really comes down to this issue of negotiating the difference in grades that are part of kind of what's baked into the site. So here, we're looking at sort of coming into the building from the north or the south there, but the difference in grade between where we're at in the building and the street front is such that to get a safe slope from the pathway, from sort of the entry point back to the curb, we need a longer run. And so we can't do that with just little individual squares. And if we have additional questions on this, I have some back up back here that can explain it in much more technical detail than I can. But the easy way to explain this is if you can just imagine that long planter acting sort of as a retaining wall to allow us to have that nice gradual transition from the street front up to where the door is. It's not a massive height difference, but it is enough because we're bounded by the street, we're bounded by the building edge and maximizing the site. And so really, the attempt was to use those planters to attractively and safely negotiate that difference in height to make sure that we don't have an issue where we're, you know, kind of talking to you guys in a couple of years about a flooded first floor. Nobody wants to have that discussion. So that is part of it. The, the size of the planter, we recognize that it's not the standard of sort of the street front planters with the squares. It does give us the opportunity to have planting area that will allow trees to grow to a scale that's appropriate for this building. So if we're looking at kind of those trade-offs, if we accept that it's a good priority to make sure that we have safe, attractive, sloped walkways and everything that works out, and we've got that plaza designed the way that we need to, we get the added benefit of being able to green up that edge of the site and really make it that entrance to the green spaces of the campus and sort of indicate to everybody, this is green space for campus, but it's also a green space that you're welcome into. Quickly touching on the entry to the service courtyard, the analogy is sort of like the entrance to a public parking garage. You're at the zero lot line, you've got a large opening. Where we have the benefit in this site is that Seventh is a one-way traffic street. So as we look at kind of that right-hand diagram, we can imagine the truck well, which is farthest to the left, you've got quite a bit of clear opening to be able to see the cars that are coming, and those cars can also see you as the large truck that's going to be moving back and forth. So that larger opening that was mentioned earlier really gives us help with that visibility. To the left of that, we do have the generator placed on the site, so that's why that's kind of bounded on the one side. And to the other side, we've got the recess truck well, there's a parking space for an additional truck, and then that's where all of the garbage dumpsters are located as well. So you'll see that on the site plan, but all of that activity is hidden within that So this approach contains the backdoor items in a minimally impactful way. Again, we're really focused on not only how we're impacting the center of campus and that usable space, but also how we're impacting the neighbors. It preserves the site green space for active use by the campus and the community for those times that we want to be able to welcome the civic engagement into campus. And it maintains open space with potential for future master plan development. So as OCC looks forward in the next ten years, we have the ability to continue to invest in the site. The next, I think the next couple of slides will show you the diagrams that help with the truck turning to help you understand why I'm focusing in particular on that future development item. This diagram, it's a little- This diagram, it's a little difficult to kind of understand if you haven't looked at it previously, but what it's showing is a truck coming in from Main Street, making that sweeping turn to be able to get off of the street, onto the site, and then backing into the truck well, and then in order to be able to negotiate back out, has to make a big sweep into the campus space and back out again. So you can see how much real estate is taken up to be able to allow these trucks to go back and forth. It's the same real estate that we're counting on for handicap parking, it's the same real estate that we're counting on for sharing with the community for activity space. And ultimately, if we went in this direction, it would handcuff us because we would never be able to do the additional investment into potential future building connections or building spaces that could occupy that part of the site. If we allow the trucks to go straight out and do that turn, so if we go to the next one, it'll show the alternative that we've proposed. So this is showing the movement, we're taking advantage of Center Street to give us some of that maneuverability that we kind of have going all over the center of the site. So here, we're coming from Main Street, we're making that turn onto Center and making a fairly simple back-up directly back into the building. So here, we're using the street grid sort of as it was intended to be able to handle that traffic and have it back in. It's not perfect. Every time we looked at this, we were sort of acknowledging that it's not perfect. It is a lot better than the almost exact same move that we're currently making off of Main Street to get into the current receiving location. This movement is not much different than that in terms of how it interacts with the public right-of-way. I know we would always like to move to an improved condition when we go from existing and we build something new, but this one is improving it from the standpoint that we're not creating all of that congestion on Main Street, we're improving the safety there, we're moving it onto a less-traffic street, and we'll be able to accommodate all of that movement while getting both the safety and sort of the aesthetic benefits of no longer being on Main Street. So I kind of want to close with that and allow you guys the opportunity for some questions, but this more visually helps you to understand the difference between the proposal and the sort of alternative that we were asked to consider that would bring that truck traffic onto the campus site. So thank you for that, and we, all of us, are prepared to take questions.
Thank you. Do I open up for public comment now?
You can open up the public hearing, and then if anyone wants to speak, then you can close the public, you just have to do the public hearing.
Now might be a good time.
Shouldn't we ask questions first or no? We're gonna do it after. Or we can take public comment first.
Yeah. If you're done with the petitioner, you can open a public hearing.
That's kind of what we should do.
But what if we're not done with the petitioner?
Well, then, don't. But he's asking for discussion.
Oh.
Nobody said anything.
I guess I will open up for questions for the petitioner. Richard Douglas.
Thank you. So I'm trying to figure out what happens to pedestrian crosswalks from the south side of Seventh to the north side of Seventh, given the truck traffic, and it's hard for me to envision where the entrances and exits are to your drop-off parking lot there.
I could give it to the site guy, so I'm gonna give it a shot, and then when I get it wrong, they'll jump up here and tackle me and tell me to do it a different way. So when we do it in the configuration where we're not bringing truck traffic onto the site, when we keep the truck traffic on the street and just backing in, the lot really only has the west entrance. So you're coming in from the west entrance that runs along the green space, and it does a loop, so it loops around, gives you the opportunity to drop off, and then you go back out the same way that you came in. Okay? As far as crosswalks in that location, you can keep the one that's sort of on the west side, you can keep the one that runs across Center. The only consideration would be whether we would look at an opportunity to move an additional crosswalk perhaps a little bit to the east to completely clear the driveway, or if we would look at a more creative solution, even up to and including with it being a less-traffic street, do we get more creative with striping more of the intersection than you would typically see to help people to understand really what's going on in that location and indicate sort of the safety of that location. So there are some additional marking strategies that we could use. If instead, you were to bring truck traffic onto the site, this turning diagram is indicating that you would have to have an in and an out to the parking lot. So you now have two egress points on the parking lot that are used by both service traffic and pedestrian, excuse me, and passenger vehicles. So that was part of the concern, was our proposal is trying to separate those two, so never do you have that situation where you have, you know, folks trying to do the same thing at the same time. So there is a difference between the two solutions, I can totally understand the confusion.
And I heard this question asked, but I'll risk repeating it. Once a truck has backed into the well, will it block the sidewalk along the south side of Seventh?
So can we have a diagram of that? Do we know exactly how far?
You can see it on the picture.
Okay. There we go.
The biggest truck that would drive on the interstate, would he have its cab over the sidewalk?
So for the sake of argument here, we've chosen the very largest truck that exists. That does not represent the majority of the trucks that deliver to OCC. So we've done worst-case for you here, the majority of the trucks that deliver here are gonna be within, but there could be some instances where you would see the truck crossing the sidewalk in that location. I suppose the silver lining to that is when you see the front of the truck, there's also sort of that acknowledgement that the truck is there for pulling back out for movement. Again, it's not a perfect solution, but in terms of some of the other priorities that we've discussed, it's the best that we can do with that one.
And somewhere in your proposal, you talked about the, or perhaps in the staff evaluation, you talked about the fact that you would have staff, security guards, you know, as trucks were coming in to block, you know, notify people, signal people, block traffic. How does that play out?
There's certainly a potential for that here that works more easily than on Main Street. You hesitate to send people out on Main Street to start flagging traffic. That's a business we frankly don't ever want to be in. At the level of traffic that you have it on Seventh, it is something that could be considered, is that because the truck traffic can be scheduled, campus security could be aware of when that is a thing, and if there were concerns about that, that would be an option that you could entertain on the narrower, less-traffic Seventh Street that you would never entertain on Main Street.
Very good, thank you.
Ms. Bickie?
I'm interested in access by people walking, biking, the bus tunnel we have in downtown bus stops and such. And so, that issue with the loading being moved to Seventh, actually, to me, in a way, is actually gonna decrease the walkability because if you're walking, if you walk a lot, you're tending to use more side streets than even Main Streets because of the traffic on Main Street. So one question I have is, I see that this whole development is taking what's in those plants that are on Main Street, moving it, but they're still intact as of now. As that loading dock functions today, if it were to stay there and perhaps be mastered or have something done so that it is nicer on Main Street, is it more functional or functioning well if it were to stay there instead of going into this building? And I'm not saying that's what you should do, but I'm curious about that option.
So we have looked at that option. The thing to consider, if you really dig into the plan of the first floor of the building, you saw how much the size of it changed relative to what's there currently. So part of the increase in that is all of the storage for culinary. So internally, we are looking at the situation that while we're getting the aesthetic benefit, while we're getting some safety benefits on Main Street, we're also getting the benefit of moving receiving to a location that is closer to the storage location for culinary. When you think about all the stuff that culinary needs to bring in, all of the supplies, all of the everything, that is also part of it. So there is, in addition to sort of the easy-to-seen benefits, there is the additional benefit that if you were to keep service traffic where it is, you would have to process a lot more material through areas of the building that are not really tied to the culinary program. And that might have impacts down the road as we begin to think about what Phase 2, 3, and 4 are of the master plan. So if in the future, we wanted to get much more creative with the Main Street side, if the chancellor decided that his dream was to have, you know, a banquet center and a really accessible public front to the campus, if we don't build it into the current phase, we would be challenged to come back later and add that into a different location. So to be perfectly honest, it's kind of a balancing act like this. It's partially the visibility, the safety, all the things we've talked about so far. And it's also putting it in the right place in a master plan standpoint, that you would want to put it in, you know, kind of the ideal location. And when you start to think about, you know, I'm gonna toss this out there, no decisions have been made, what if all of the buildings eventually are replaced, or what if parts of the buildings are reconfigured? You want to make sure, and that was part of the thing for putting the power plant additionally where it is, is that it opens up opportunities for future planning of the campus.
And I'll make a comment related to that, that A, number one, once you vacate that, this is just a general comment, that green building, while you're making fun of it, actually is quite attractive in terms of its brick, and if you ever run the tape modern, I wouldn't necessarily discount reusing if you do when and if you move all of these things off. A related question, do trucks currently pull all the way in away from the sidewalk in the current bay that you have inside of that area?
There is a longer run from Main Street.
So yes, they can pull away off and there is...
There's more space, they're not covering the sidewalk if that is the question.
Because I've walked there often and I haven't noticed the trucks, so therefore, they either must be very early morning or they're all the way off the sidewalk.
They are able to pull a bit farther back, so there is a little bit more site space. We weren't able to get quite as much depth just because of the narrowness of the site that's available. We needed to be able to have the trucks back up and still have some internal space behind it so that you are able to service the trucks.
And I think I understood this correctly, so all of the green space that's interior to the campus and the access points to the campus, there's gonna be more permeability for people who are not necessarily attending classes to be able to walk from one side of the block to the other through the campus, right? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yep, absolutely. It is the first stage of kind of shifting from what I talked about earlier, of sort of an introverted approach to campus planning, to being something that is much more open. A lot of the other options that we've looked at for future development start to push that farther. So when we talk about we're not putting quite as many trees back as we would like to, we can look at what do we do with green space as we consider some of the other building options. But 100% that by maintaining sort of that pathway into the green space of the building, you could circumvent walking in front of the service yard entirely because it would be 100% open to you to come through the campus and go out the other way.
And I'll just leave this as a comment, I am concerned about the relatively low amount of green space on the outside of the building and the tree situation, because again, you may be have seen, we just adopted our Sustainability Climate Action Plan and some other things coming on, and again, we all acknowledge the flooding and such, and so we really have to be attentive to the role of the green space and the trees in helping mitigate those things. But I'll leave that as a comment and let other people ask questions.
Well, actually, just give me two seconds to touch on that, because I can see Mark drilling, you know, into the back of my head over here. I want to make sure that everybody has noticed that the parking lot that is proposed there is permeable paving, so we're already looking at surface, we're looking at opportunities to add some green space in that is not there currently. So the current lot is not that, as you know. But as we sort of replace that and look at new opportunities for that paving, we're looking at that same situation to alleviate that, and we'll continue to look at it as further adjustments or need to other parts of the campus.
What do you have for you?
Yeah, just to reiterate, going back to this parking dock thing, or this loading dock thing, you said it's about two trucks a day, like one in the morning, one at night?
It's gonna differ between different days, but the emphasis here is that it's not constant truck traffic.
Right. It's not a factory.
Right. So you're gonna have, you're gonna have the ability to schedule deliveries, and so if there was a particular interest to try to avoid certain times, I know we've got neighbors that have different interests and things like that, there may be some work that we can do with the suppliers to sort of adjust the times of that. But to your question, yeah, it's a couple of trucks a day on the busy days.
Okay. And most of them are below the, I assume that's a, is that a 50?
Yeah, this one is full freeway size.
67?
You're gonna get a lot of your deliveries in sort of box trucks.
Right.
You think about the sort of thing that delivers to most of the restaurants, they're not constantly getting giant semis, and we would not expect that either. Probably beginning of semester for major supplies for the full campus, and then occasionally, you know, for the new culinary program. But they're not seeing tons of full freeway-sized trucks by any means.
But if you were to get a 67-footer, you would be able to, you know, schedule it, know when it's coming, understand what time it needs to come, and then you could have security out there. I guess my one question is, I mean, you have a one-way street, you have parking here, you know, if you do have an obstruction on the sidewalk, you know, how long will that be? Is that just a matter of 10 minutes to unload, or, you know, two hours to unload the truck? Or is it, you know, a milk run where they're dropping off, you know, something real quick and, you know, not even turning the engine off and pulling out?
I can't answer exactly, yeah, it's gonna be, you know, 30 minutes to an hour.
30 minutes, okay.
Yeah.
We would anticipate.
Okay.
That would be the guess.
So, a couple times a day, you get a truck, and it's very rare to get a 67-foot truck. And when it is there, it's there for 30 minutes. But in exchange, for this scenario, you're saying, hey, look, if we were to go with the alternative, the next best alternative, which would be multiple turning points, which is always a challenge, you would go right through the accessible parking lot where you have different modalities, you know, you know, people have a reason to park there. And, you know, that could create, you know, a greater opportunity for inconvenience, damage, or injury versus, you know, and with this one, I mean, like we said, with reverse angle parking, it's always, you know, backing in, you're aware of the environment, and then pulling out, you know, the driver, especially if he's a 67-footer, is gonna see everybody in front of him, you know?
The 67-footer is always going to be to that westernmost location, and so they're always get that 10-foot triangle, you will have at least that much visibility to the traffic, which is only coming from the Main Street side. The visibility to the other side is less critical unless somebody has decided to go completely the wrong way down the street, and then I think we have some other issues to address in that case. So the largest trucks are always gonna have the greatest visibility out that opening, which was one of the benefits of having the one-way traffic in that location and being able to do it. You could end up with another car that's pulling out, but, I mean, in that instance, it's next to it, and in most cases, if the truck's not there for the 30 minutes that it's there, you can, you know, kind of pull to the side.
And if you have to avoid that truck because it's doing its maneuvering, or it's backed in and it's a lengthy truck, I would imagine when I look at the destination here where folks are going, you know, if you're on a stroll, walking your dog, I suppose you're a little bit free to cross at the crosswalks or whatever, backtrack, or wait. And then I would imagine the other opportunity that I see is pretty much you have, people are gonna be going to the main entrance of your campus there, or if they're part of the campus, they might alternatively go through, let's say you're going to class, or you're going to instruct, or you're going to work, you would go through the accessible parking, that entrance right there by the accessible parking, I imagine, if you got a badge, it's a badged entrance, I imagine, right? So if you're somewhere, if you have a purpose to be in the building, you can, you would cut down there, or you would cut through the front entrance, I imagine, the main entrance to get into the building if there was a temporary, in the rare occasion that there was.
The folks using that lot would never cross the service entry. That is sort of the point of having that long circulation through the building, is that you can proceed from that lot directly through the building to the entry point that's on Main Street without interacting with anything else.
I mean, it's a little different if you have, like if on Main and Seventh, there was another building or entity, or shopping mall, or doctor's office or something, but you guys, it's all self-contained there.
Right.
And then the only other question I have, you mentioned a lot about palettes and color and design, and maybe I missed it, and I apologize, I've been looking for it, the cladding that's currently on the existing building today, you're integrating that, or you're...
No, let me be clear on that one, because that one gets a little bit tricky.
Because some of the photos show that it's still in there and everything on the...
So, yeah, you're gonna see some renderings that still indicate other areas of campus. So with it being a master plan, we're obviously not touching all of the buildings in Phase 1. So you're still seeing some views around the building that's catching a view of what we've been politely calling the champagne panels, because that's the nicest color name that we can come up with for them. You're still seeing some of the green brick and some of the circulation towers of the existing buildings that will remain. And in the front views of the building, you are still seeing to the power plant that is currently still in operation. So you're seeing some of those materials. When I made the reference to the panels, the new versus the old, the benefit that you get immediately is because we have to keep some of those old panels, all of the old panel configurations are vertical. So when you look at the campus, you're kind of seeing that verticality everywhere you look. When you look at the new materiality, those new panels also have a vertical configuration, but a very different material look. So what that gives us is a vocabulary where on day one, although it's a different material, it feels like it goes together with what's on the campus. So you don't have a jarring old versus new on day one, even though we still have a lot of buildings that have the existing look. As OCC continues to look at placing investment around the campus, they can work within that palette. So maybe as the champagne panels disappear, they're replaced with something... So maybe as the champagne panels disappear, they're replaced with something like this or some variation of the vocabulary. So that was the only point I was trying to make is that it gives us flexibility now to not replace with same. So we're not coming back in with more of what's there. But what we're coming in with is something that has kind of a shared language with the existing so that it doesn't feel jarring in the interim while we're waiting for the exciting rest of the development.
So for a dumb guy like me, panels are staying for now, and you feel that they integrate well with the new design. And because the new design has that same sort of flexibility, you can always replace the panels down the road with newer development.
We have all kinds of options.
The panels are, have had their, they've lasted a long time. I'm pretty sure it's a bomb shelter. I'm not sure.
There are challenges and nobody loves them, but in the future, and I'm just gonna lay out options that we have, none of these have been committed to. You could go and re-clad the existing buildings and do it however you want. You could go in and remove portions of the existings and build new additions. You could remove whole sections of the building and put in new pieces. But all of it can work within the new material language that we're setting up with Piece 1. So we've got a new neutral palette that allows us to start to work into other areas of the campus.
And worst case scenario, you put it all up and it's like, yeah, you know, maybe, you know, you can never, until you see the exact light and the exact time of day, you might say, hey, let's, um, let's replace that cladding in a couple of years or whatever. But if it looks nice and integrates well, then money saved.
I know there are some folks that have targets on the wall and I won't point out exactly what's what, but I know that there is an eye to thinking about what would the next step be after this project. So it's going to work on day one, but that doesn't preclude Phases 2, 3, 4.
I mean, my objective is not to get rid of the brown paneling, it's to make it look nice and the whole area looks nice. I just wasn't sure if there was something that was gonna change there.
Not immediately. The immediate focus is kind of centered on this northeast side.
Understood now. All right.
Yeah, um, by the way, I'm really excited about the Culinary School in Royal Oak. It's great. Uh, and I hope to get something yummy to eat one day.
I keep putting that food on the cover.
That's a good, good marketing. Um, so real quick with the trucks one more time.
Sure thing.
Right now, there's not nearly as much traffic, truck traffic at OCC Royal Oak campus now as there will be when there's a culinary school. I gotta imagine there's gonna be way more delivery to a culinary school than there is. People taking my old intro to philosophy class didn't need too many supplies. But I think I understood the busiest times are maybe two trucks a day. And, uh, I gotta imagine a lot of box trucks, given the kinds of things that get delivered to restaurants and so forth. But when there's need for a big semi, uh, I've had experience trying to load and unload in my lifetime. I'd be surprised if 30 minutes got it done if you brought in that big old trailer and started unloading it. But that's not gonna happen very often. My two cents, just to tip my hand, is that doesn't concern me near as much as, uh, as a, as a big problem because I think the win of, uh, this view fixes a lot of that. And I don't wanna see the crossing of that, uh, you know, parking lot on the north side there coming off of 7th Street and that truck traffic happen. I think that that's a really bad idea. So I appreciate, this seems like the best solution from my perspective. So I don't see in the renderings, if we haven't really talked about it, bike parking, bicycles. What's the thought? I know there's this great structure.
We did space for them. Have we placed anything specifically?
Not specifically, but south side near that rural, uh, foodiest spot.
Yeah. I just think it's a great chance to, you know, with all this stuff going on to kind of upgrade our?
I believe there's bicycle racks at the southwest corner at this time already.
Yeah, in that sort of indent there, what is the main entrance?
Floor left on that diagram. I believe we have some down that area that, um, Washington may do.
You do?
And is there a Mogo station there too?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, okay. But that's where bikes are now.
I just wanna add, tag onto that and comment that you have a very, very large parking garage and covered bike parking would be very welcome to, again, encourage people to make, take that option. Um, and leaving your bike outside is a real bummer, but you can, you know, so if you could, you know, allocate some of those spaces.
We may have some already in there. Don't pull me that. I see recall seeing it in there.
I don't, I don't think so, cause I walk by all the time, but maybe there are bike lockers.
We certainly have more parking count than is required, you know, per the initial look. And so something like that could be something that we could take a look at.
Sorry, interrupting your call.
No, it's a great idea. I remember parking there years, for years and years. And I don't remember indoor parking, but that was a few years back, so.
One of the members of our team rode a bicycle to the meeting this evening, so we were having a very similar conversation right before.
Yeah, all right. Your role model. While my mic is open, I had a quick question, probably for Mr. Twain. Uh, we have two votes, is that right? A special land use and then a site plan?
That's correct.
We've spent all our time so far talking about site plan, but we probably?
Pretty much site plan issues.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with questions? All right, then I have a few. Um, going back to the flex lot and you mentioned the previous pavement there, um, a couple of questions there. One, is that entire parking area previous pavement or just portions of it? And what percentage of it's a portion?
The entire lot, correct?
Yeah, except the center, which would be more.
Okay, there was the potential for green space in the center of the lot. So if there's a green island in the center, that would be the only part that's not permeable paving.
Gotcha, okay. And was that, is that one of the strategies that you're employing to deal with the flooding issue around there? Is that one of the reasons?
It's a best practice solution to start with. It's also something that makes that space more attractive for event use. So as we start to think about, um, when you take the cars out of it and you're trying to make it a venue for art speeds needs, what makes it feel like a special place that people can occupy as opposed to just, we've cleared a parking lot for the purpose of this activity? Um, it's certainly something that can be used as a tool towards the potential for flooding. But I think the initial thought in doing that was really more the experience of the lot and the multi-use of the lot to be an amenity for both OCC and Royal Oak.
Okay, thank you. Keeping on that same subject around flooding, um, while the mayor is dimensionally challenged today, I'm a little bit spatially challenged. Can you walk through the, the issue with the planters, um, on Main Street? And I understand the floodplain issue and how you're having to raise the elevation of the first floor. I'm still looking at some of the renderings and the north and east elevations. It's still not 100% clear to me as to, I guess, the need for the planters and how they're helping resolve that grade change issue.
So if we can go back to the image that, I think it's towards the bottom, actually, if we scroll the other way.
Other way?
Yep, the other way. It's close to the end. Here we go. This is the one that we wanna look at. So imagine that we've raised the finished floor of the building. We're also locked into a curb elevation. We're not changing the elevation of the curb at the street. And so there's a differential between those two heights. When we're trying to put an appropriate slope on, you know, someone, let's have someone in the building who's looking to exit the building and reach sort of the sidewalk in the front. Uh, you need to mediate that slope in such a way that it's not overly steep for handicap accessibility for, you know, ease of travelability. And so by placing the longer planter, what you can do is use the edge of that planter to address the slope of that. If you interrupted that planter, if you instead put two or three squares, at the point where the planter stops, you're gonna have like a fall-off point on that slope. You're not gonna be able to address the difference in the way that that topography flows. So when you're coming out of the building, if you follow the pink arrow, the highest point will be at the building entry. And then as you follow those arrows around, you have the full length of the arrow to address that slope difference as opposed to the very short arrow you would have if you went from the entry immediately to the edge of the sidewalk. So you have a, and I can't point you out, but you have an arrow this long if you're just going from the building entry directly to the sidewalk and it would have to be quite steep. Or it's the same solution as when you provide a ramp and new upstairs. You can do sort of a switchback condition that takes you out and gradually slopes it. And then you come back and you have that full length, which is probably three to four times the length, um, to be able to do that. But you need a continuous vertical surface to have the edge of that ramp or else you fall off.
Okay, so that, really, the planter that we're talking about is the larger green rectangle, not the three smaller ones?
Yeah, it's Mark's turn, cause this is one where you can explain it a lot better than I can.
Mark Heber, landscape architect with HED. So in addition to what Tracy's referring to with that larger planter elongating that run, we've got a curb line that's low. So what we're doing with the planters along the street edge is essentially allowing the grade to pitch up tightly through the planter, but softly across the walkway. The work that's being done right now on that street is creating a drop-off along this edge. You see that, the way that that bulbs out on the northeast corner? So we've got an opportunity to actually banquet facility events to drop people off at the curb line. We're doing so in a very controlled location so that we can make that slope soft. Otherwise, the slope is very steep coming off the curb to the handicap route on the sidewalk. So that's the purpose of the planters.
And what does that elevation change from curb level or street level to first floor?
Specifically off how? That I don't know. I know that we're, pardon me?
18 inches.
1.5 feet.
Over what width?
Well, we're lengthening the run so that we end up with slopes that are more like 2%. Uh, the slopes through the planters at the curb line are 4 to 4.5%. 5% would require a handrail.
Okay, so that, that does help me. Thank you.
Sure.
Can I just want to follow up on that, just to, so I can?
Please, go ahead.
And this picture we're looking at now, what, what streets, what location is this? Because I don't see the planters when I look at the other renderings.
It's Main Street.
Okay, so this is Main Street. This is your plaza entrance?
Right.
Yes, that's what this is. Okay. And so what is that, in that middle green thing, is that also a planter box? Is that what that thing is?
It is, yes.
Okay. Cause in the renderings, I don't see them. I just see a tree line, so I want, I'm trying to understand. Okay, okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that. I thought it was Main Street, but I wanted to make sure.
The goal is not to have planter boxes that are up to waist level. The goal is to keep them.
Right. The notion would be that each one of these green zones is encased by a little four-inch curb to something to index snow removal equipment or whatever and put a clean edge on it. Uh, so it's intended to be very low in terms of vegetation, so that you've got a nice clear sightline into the building.
My concerns are on tripping, but, yep.
Is there the potential to, um, to utilize the ones closest to Main Street as rain gardens?
It's possible, sure. The pitch that we would get, I mean, again, the work is being done right now in the street. Um, we actually approached the engineering department and asked about some elevation opportunities. Uh, they're too far along on that work to consider that. But certainly we could have, um, the plaza spaces and the sidewalk tip into those with openings in the curb and create a infiltration opportunity.
Yeah, cause I'm just thinking, there's the noted stormwater issues at this corner, that might be a nice opportunity to kind of integrate certain things. Uh, okay, so now getting back to the, um, the trucks for a second. Um, if I understood everything correctly, a couple of trucks, the, only the longest ones would be blocking the sidewalk and that would be on a rare occurrence.
If we look at the diagram here, you can actually see the cab of the truck. So at this point, the very longest ones, the cab is what's coming across the sidewalk. If you imagine a box truck that's typically delivering from Staples or a smaller food operation, it's not gonna be considerably longer than, you know, kind of an average car. It gets a little bit longer than that, but it's certainly gonna be within the length of a full-size highway semi-trailer. So those would not be crossing the sidewalk. So really, the only risk that you have is those couple of times that we're dealing with something that's a full size.
So with those, um, those rare instances where you are maybe walking the sidewalk, do you currently have, uh, in your standard operating procedures, a plan to address that in terms of, um, anything that happens out on that sidewalk for safety of pedestrians that are walking up? I know it's rare occurrence that that might happen, but is that something you currently do address in procedures?
We don't have that, we don't have that occurrence happening at this present time.
Okay.
It's probably consideration to us kind of, you wouldn't like adopting those, those type of procedures.
Okay.
The Main Street one being deeper, we haven't had to address that currently.
We've had occasions where operationally, we've had individuals informally try to direct traffic. We're trying to avoid that situation with this, um, this plan.
Yeah, I know the, the plan of operations has been approved already, but I would strongly encourage you to have a specific, um, plan in place for those occurrences when a delivery truck is blocking that sidewalk. All right, next question is the, on the north elevation. Um, I certainly understand the, uh, the purpose of that, um, that hardscape wall going along the whole north facade. I am a little bit concerned about that, cause it's a fairly lengthy hardscape wall along that entire sidewalk. Uh, the elevation, I guess it would be the, at the northwest corner. Um, it looks like it shows some green screen plantings, um, maybe some vine-like plantings going up, sort of the same type of wall. Um, is there a plan to, or would you consider doing something similar, uh, at least on portions of that long wall along 7th Street?
There are some things that we have looked at and it's tied into, obviously, the signage approval for this site is not part of this review. So we have some things that we're looking at for signage. There have been some discussions about would we consider, um, sort of a mural opportunity on that wall? Maybe a grayscale mural of some things. The challenge to green would of course be that we're very near to the property line there. So to get it enough, uh, enough basis for something to grow up from the bottom might be a little challenging. But there have been some other things that have been looked at, whether it's a mural or some other opportunities that might provide some diversity along the wall. But that's kind of tied more in with our workflow for signage and other, you know, pieces of the building. That way, we've been more concerned with the actual hard construction.
Yeah, I just wanna build on that. I mean, the first thing when I saw this wall, and I'm glad Mr. Gantina brought it up, is, yeah, you know, I mean, you're, you got four, you know, a box that's trapped by sidewalks. I mean, there's no good way to put anything anywhere, right, that isn't desirable? So you need a foundational wall, you need a loading dock, you know, you gotta pick a side, right? At some point, you gotta, but, you know, I think whether it's a mural or whether it is public art. Um, and sometimes with the signage stuff, I mean, it's, it's, um, we treat it differently here in the city of Royal Oak. We have a commission for the arts, there's an application for it. And it'd be really interesting, especially with the energy and theme that you're bringing to town, uh, student art from other campuses even from there. And, I mean, the city would fully back you on any desire to put public art in the space. I think this is a prime area, you know, for folks to activate that space and to have a canvas there to showcase the talent of the college and/or, you know, the community and/or other partners you may have. So, um, I don't know, I mean, all the things that would go into hanging some paintings or, um, you know, painting a mural. I mean, that's kind of up to you, but there's, you know, the signage requirements and all this, that we're not allowed to read signs, but we can approve murals. And you see them all over town. Um, so just something, I mean, if that were a condition where, of approval, where you guys would make a good faith effort to, you know, activate that space with public art, whatever that is, up to you.
The campus has had prior engagement with the DIA. There has been art.
Yeah, yeah, an art explored right there, yeah.
Previously, we've discussed the art programs within OCC and what those can bring to the table. It's just it hasn't been sort of fully realized to get it on the renderings. But certainly, everybody's looking at that wall as a potential canvas, whether it's something that's permanently attached to it or whether it's something that's able to be changed out, so.
We really want pretty art, you know, to that campus. So walls, an opportunity, we've been talking about bicycle racks and trying to incorporate art, you know, into just really normal bicycle racks, we could do something really kind of fun, um, and so that's.
The TV is gonna watch you to come up to the mic.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
What I was saying is we're really looking for opportunities to bring art to the campus, whether sculptures, murals. Uh, we've looked at that, that wall as an opportunity, that, the charcoal gray wall is an opportunity to bring art, potentially a mural. We've been thinking about, we've had conversations with the DIA in the past. Um, but even things like the bicycle racks and, you know, instead of just having normal bicycle racks, can we do something fun? Can we do something with culinary-themed bicycle racks? So we're not quite there yet, uh, but this is really the next step is, as far as how do we really make a statement with artwork and, uh, and tie in all of the efforts that the city has been doing over the last number of years and really try to bring that, uh, really south of the railroad tracks as well.
Even, even your permeable pavement, you know, if you use pavers, you could do crazy mosaics and stuff like that that really draw a unique versus just the staggered, you know, pavers. You can, there's a, literally the whole campus is a canvas, but, okay, so that's something that you guys are very open to. Um, cause I think when I saw that, I keep looking at that wall and it, it kind of distracts a little bit from the backend operations too. You know what I mean? It draws the eye away from, uh?
Absolutely.
It draws the eye away from, you know, where the trash gets picked up. Okay, good, that's it, sorry. Since you're on that vein, I wanted to jump in and ask.
You touched on something we're excited about, so, yeah, slightly real minute.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, and apropos of that, the last I recall, the college has a pretty outstanding ceramics program, so you wouldn't have to worry about maintenance of paintings and stuff if you went that route, just thought.
All right, so I do have one last question with regards to sustainability. We've already talked about the previous pavement in the parking area. I don't know that I picked up any other things that you might want to highlight from a sustainability perspective. You know, there's a fairly large roof here, you do have stormwater concerns, I don't think there's any sort of green roof plan. If you could maybe just touch on any elements of sustainability that are brought into the project that we may not be aware of or are readily apparent from what we've discussed.
Jack, I don't know if you want an opportunity to talk about some of the materials, Mark, if there was anything else that I stopped you from talking about on the site.
Oh, no, no, referring glass.
To the microphone. Yep. It's okay, I was just checking so that I would know kind of what to bring forward. So one of the things that we looked at, as we're introducing as much glass and as much visibility, you've noticed probably the fridded patterns that are on the glass that enables us to bring the daylight into the space and avoid the glare concerns. It also helps to control the heat gain of the building itself, so we're getting that balance. So there is that as we look at it. There is some sustainability benefits of some of the metal panel construction that we're looking at in terms of just the manufacturing processes of those pieces, and of course, you know, kind of just the benefit of having some of the masonry materials as well, that helps to get us there. I know that Mark is always looking for opportunities within the space as well, so the permeable paving, the green spaces that we are able to incorporate, there is not, just to be clear, there is not a green roof planned currently. But we're looking, HED really focuses in on best practices approach for all things related to sustainability, even for projects that we're not pursuing a program like LEED, for example. So, I am not qualified to talk about everything we're doing on the mechanical end, but because we are moving the power plant, and this is so heavily based on the infrastructure, there are a lot of measures that are currently being put into the new ways of thinking about how to upgrade from what we had kind of on the Main Street piece, bring it into the new location, and have a new power source and a new service for the entire campus. So unfortunately, I, I don't know if there's anybody here that's prepared to jump in on that end, but because it's such a significant portion of the program, I can at least assure you that the upgrade from the way the campus was powered and serviced currently to where we're going is a big step forward. So considering that that's about a quarter to a third of the program that we're here, that's a, a big step forward that we can definitely claim in terms of sustainability there as well.
Okay. Well, it sounds like some things are still up for discussion. I would definitely encourage you to continue to look at green roof options, because I think it would help with some of the stormwater, not, obviously, won't absorb a ton, but it will certainly help with that situation. And then you also have quite a bit of area on that roof to implement renewables, which again, for a large building like this, will make a small impact, however, there's site lighting, all sorts of other areas where even a small amount of renewables on this roof would provide a benefit, not only to the building, but also the environment. That's all the questions that I have. Mayor Fournier?
Yeah, you got my mind going a little bit now on some of the sustainability stuff. You guys do have a curriculum on, like, renewable energy, if I'm not mistaken. Am I right, like, installation of solar panels at all or anything, or is that something from way in the past that...
I'm gonna step back.
We, we do not per se, but we do incorporate sustainability into training, like our HVAC training and some of the skilled, you know, some, like the HVAC training, it does include sustainability training.
Okay. Because I mean, you know, if it can't be a green roof, there might be an opportunity, I mean, just a financial opportunity for solar panels on top of the roof, and I don't know if you considered that in your design. We're seeing it now to a point where folks are voluntarily putting them in just because it, you know, makes a lot of sense financially over the long term.
Yeah. We, you know, like the art, sustainability is, is the topics that we're discussing right now on our, our steering committee with the architects, and so the, the hope is, once we sort of get this, this approved, that we really start to look at the signage and, and art and sustainability as those next steps, to try to incorporate that as much as we possibly can, not just with this building, but really for the whole campus.
Okay. Ms. Biki?
I'll, I'll just tag onto that. Again, the, the, the use of native plants and native trees and native shrubs, much more preferential than ornamentals, and also bird, bird-safe glass is another one. With this much glass, birds die all the time crashing into the glass, and so if you're, you have the opportunity to do something like that, and you're already doing something with the design, I think that might help, like, to just specifically make sure that that's a part of it, can also be good. So I just wanted to add those, because I think it's great. I love the setback in the open plaza entrance. I think building up always to the, the street line is not great, so, so again, like my colleagues, I'm looking forward to the whole project. So as, as green as we can make it, not just in name, but in true functionality, is appreciated.
And as we were talking about the uses of the site, I know one of the issues with the use permit was the outdoor seating space. I just want to be clear that the outdoor seating space that is shown on the plans is not like your eating area for cafes in other parts of Royal Oak. The restaurant is on the third level, and the rest of the culinary is on two and three. There is no intent for a direct sidewalk cafe, so it's not being used in that way, it's more kind of just a site amenity. When we talk about opening the campus and making it more welcoming to folks, that is something that goes a long way towards that, when you provide the opportunity to have dwell spaces as well as pass, pass-through spaces. So just to be clear, in some ways, when you look at it, you're saying, okay, you've got a liquor permit, you've got this, you've got this. I just want to be clear that the outdoor seating is not really tied to restaurant or liquor permit or any of those, it's more of a campus and green space amenity.
Still got a hold of a public hearing.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's no other questions here, I was gonna open the, since it is a public hearing, open it up for public comment. If there is anyone in the audience that is here to make a public comment on this particular agenda item, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and let us know what you have to say. And as a reminder, you have three minutes.
I just want to say, at the beach, I want to look, great idea, one thing good for the city. I remember when OCC first came here, and they have wonderful ideas, and I think it'd be great for the city and for the youth and for every age. And these kids can take the accelerated classes, you know, as they do at OCC, and I just think it's a wonderful idea, and I hope it goes through. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to comment? Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and close the public comment, bring it back to this side of the table. Are there any additional questions, comments from this side? We spoke a lot about the site plan, I don't know if there's any questions about the special land use, should probably spend some time discussing that, too. Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'll move approval of the special land use. I find this project meets Item C on our staff memo, or from the zoning ordinance, the basis of determination. It's harmonious in accordance with the general objectives of the master plan, it will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, will not be hazardous or disturbing to existing uses or uses reasonably anticipated in the future, will be an improvement in relation to property in the immediate vicinity and to the city as a whole, will be served adequately by essential public services and facilities, or that the persons responsible for the establishment of the proposed use will provide adequately any such service or facility, will not create excessive additional public costs, and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the city, and will be consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, and comply with all applicable provisions and standards which are established for said use by this chapter and other applicable codes.
Is there support? Support by Mayor Fournier? Any other discussion on the special land use portion of this?
I have a question. Is this, is this the portion, and is this included in this, the requirement to contribute fifty-five thousand?
This is simply approving the ability to have alcohol service and, as well as outdoor service.
Oh, thank you.
That would be in the...
No comment on that.
If there's no other discussion, we will call the vote on the special land use. Mr. Curtis?
Aye.
I'm yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that special land use is approved unanimously. Next would be discussion on the site plan itself. Any further discussion on the site plan or emotion or questions?
I, I have a question for Mr. Twine, or maybe, maybe for Mr. Layal. Are we, are we permitted to restrict the truck sizes that would come into this loading dock as part of our requirements on something like this? Or would that have to be something that's already in our city ordinances? Some cities have requirements that certain sized trucks are simply not allowed. We've had, had issues with semi-trucks like delivering woodwork, disturbing neighbors and, so I'm just wondering how that, what, how that works.
Well, if, if your determination is to allow the truck loading area to stay in its proposed location, there are several staff contingencies that you're going to have to If you wanted to allow it there, you could clearly add a contingency that no truck that exceeds the length of the loading bay would be permitted. And if there's a truck that comes in, goes over the sidewalk, it'd be subject to violation.
Any other questions, discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, so, we have a downtown where when trucks make deliveries, they park in the turn lane, in the center lane, and unload with a ramp down the back of the truck and run a hand truck across the lane of traffic to the local businesses. And, and nobody seems to have any problem with that. So it seems to me that what, what we're proposing here, a couple trucks a day on a very lightly used street is not going to be as onerous as what we see elsewhere in the town. Also, we have few downtown, I was going through Google Maps, trying to find businesses downtown that have facades on all four sides of a block, and there are very few, most of them back up to an alley. The one I can think of is the, is the post office with that handsome parking lot right there on Eight Mile. So I, I, you know, sympathetic to the challenges of finding a, finding a side of this, this facade where you can appropriately have deliveries and, and, you know, loading activities. What did I say here? I find the, the, I do think that the idea of additional striping in that area would help to maybe alleviate some of the problems. The, the problem with what Commissioner Biki proposes is that what, if a larger truck had to deliver a bunch of big stuff, they'd just pull up on Seventh Street and unload from, you know, from the street itself into the loading dock, further obstructing traffic. So I, I think the, the odds of a semi blocking that sidewalk on any sort of regular basis are slim. I, I'm not concerned about that myself, but others may weigh in on that subject.
My comment was more to not prohibit them in general in the city, but, but maybe, maybe attach to this as well, but go ahead.
I love the setbacks. In fact, the, the city commission has been talking about establishing some community benefit standards, things that developers can do that benefit the city in exchange for maybe concessions that the city might be making. So here, we have someone who is bringing a public space, a public plaza on that corner, which is a, it is a sustainable benefit really to the rest of the city. So with the, I, I think we're going to need to maybe crack some terms from the proposed site plan, but in general, I support the thoughtful decisions that the applicant has made about truck traffic.
Mayor Fournier?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just kind of echo what Commissioner Douglas has said. I mean, it's, you know, you've done a great job bringing in a lot of considerations, and like with anything, it's always a series of trade-offs, right? There's never, you know, a perfect solution for anything, but the sum of all the imperfect solutions has got us pretty close to something that's, that's, that's really, really cool, or is really, really cool, not pretty close. And I think there's a very thoughtful approach, impacts have been minimized, and those impacts we have to weigh against, you know, all the gains that we get. What are the gains that we get? We get obviously a more inviting campus that actually is part of the community versus, you know, Main Street being a loading dock. You have two main entrances now, you have the navigable courtyard which circulates and moves people around. I really like the site plan in that regard. You have accessible parking, kind of all clustered in that one area with a flex space that the community can use when, you know, the college is not using it, you know, for special events, or maybe for the college's special events, I mean, who knows? And I think that's a big change from, you know, go back ten years ago, fifteen years ago, I mean, there wasn't, you know, a great, I won't say it wasn't a bad relationship, there just wasn't a strong relationship. And now we're starting to see, you know, how a community and a college can come together and really leverage each other's environments to, to really benefit and uplift, you know, everybody. And so there are some, some tricky things, and I think there is a thoughtful approach and, and also an eye towards the future as well, which is important to, to me, because you can solve a problem today, but if you're not thinking about, you know, this building, I don't know, what was it, designed in the fifties or sixties or seventies or something? It's kind of got, we've got a bunch of errors, in my opinion, not that I know much about errors. And, you know, if it had been designed with the future growth of Royal Oak in mind and everything that we brought to town, and, and not just, you know, a stopping point, and some real estate to put at campus, you know, maybe we'd be having a little bit of a different conversation today. So I really appreciate the fact that, you know, the site plan considers the opening up the campus even further to, to adapt to, you know, the changing environment, because what we teach our kids is going to change over time. So, really impressed with it. There is a negative, and it's some advice I have, I'll, I'll certainly be supporting the site plan at this point, notwithstanding any other convincing from my colleagues as far as, you know, if there's other nuances. It, you know, and you've been working on it for a while, it does come a little short compared to other projects when it comes to environmental sustainability features and really having those highlighted. So I would think if there are some intentions or plans or vision, I mean, you being an academic institution, I think carry a lot more credibility that our plan is to do some of these things in the future versus a private enterprise, like, you know, once you approve the plan, that's done, I mean, there's a little bit more faith in what you're going to do. I would suggest when you go to the city commission, if there is a difference in the mechanical area where, you know, I don't even know how you would calculate it in terms of efficiency, you know, but that those improvements are calculated, the permeable issues are calculated, how you're addressing the trees are, are calculated, but also if there are future plans to add more sustainable features to deal with stormwater, to deal with, I mean, we're very proud of our climate action plan here, and to the extent you pick that up, take a look at it, and see how your project resonates with that, I think that will be a really, you know, equally important highlight of the project, so. But overall, I think, pretty darn good, and I know it's been a long work in process, and, you know, you can tell there's been a lot of thought put into it.
Well, I'll walk through the site plan memo then, and, and the planning commission members can, I guess, clean it up or modify it how you see fit. The first item would be that the planning staff is recommending that the loading and service area shall be reconfigured and relocated so that it accesses from within the property boundaries without vehicles backing over Seventh Street or Center Street. And we do believe there's a way to accomplish that, but if the planning commission believes the confirmed configuration is adequate, Item One should be removed from any motion you make. The existing barrier-free driveway on the west side shall be relocated, and the truck, well, again, if you leave it, needs a variance to be over thirty feet, so if you leave it, you will have to grant this permission to go to the ZBA to get thirty-six feet versus the maximum of thirty. The existing pedestrian crosswalk over Seventh to the municipal lot, we're, we're indicating again that it should be maintained in a, in a location that's sufficient, again, that hasn't been identified on a, on a plan because of the loading dock area in the backend. Item Four is in regards to the proposed planter boxes on South Main and West Seventh Street. Right-of-way, the planning and engineering department are recommending those be removed, and that the city's established streetscape pattern be maintained and installed as required and designed by the engineering division. The suggestion was that potentially those be moved back onto the petitioner's private property. The engineering division does not like to use the city right-of-way to address on-site private property issues. The petitioner shall either confirm that the alley has been vacated or apply to have it vacated. Again, the reason for that was there's some discrepancy in the county records and, and what's on file. Six was that both existing property, property... Uh, six was that both existing property, property numbers be combined. Uh, the purpose for that is so that the building can, uh, doesn't cross a property line as that it's not allowed under the building code. Uh, seven is the planning commission's determination that the building setbacks, the height, the width ratio, the ground level window proposal, the site clearance setback, has, are approved as depicted on the site plan or as you may choose to modify them. If you want those modified, you would need to modify this resolution or that item, excuse me. Item eight is that all other landscaping um will be as you uh deemed fit on the site plan as well as including a payment of $55,800 uh dollars in the removal to cover the uh tree replacement ordinance. All the other standard contingencies are regarding uh lighting, signage, uh performance bonds and compliance with the uh city ordinances and building codes.
Mr. Curtis. I remember, I think you said, Mr. Twing, that if, if the planning commission decided to allow the loading dock as depicted on the plan sheets, that there would need to be wording changed in several of the recommendations. One, it would omit recommendation number one. But what else did you have in mind when you said that? What else would need to change if the commission?
Well, item one.
Yeah.
Item two would be modified to either allow the zoning board or, or to grant permission for the zoning board to consider the wider driveway or that you would require that it be reduced to 30 feet.
Okay.
So that one you would need to modify is under item two depending on which of those two you wanted to do. Item three, if you leave it where it's, where the driveway, the loading bay is, uh, I'm not sure where the pedestrian crosswalk would end up on Seventh. So item three.
Yeah.
Again, would be impacted.
Yeah.
Those are all the ones related to the.
Okay.
And then to go to Ms. Beke's point, if you wanted to limit the length of a truck, you could add that. Or length of a truck, I should say.
Commissioner Douglas.
Mr. Twing, uh, item number four, the whole issue of the planter boxes. Um, what, so the, the petitioner is saying that this building has to be higher than the water table, I guess, um, to avoid flooding. Um, and, and then they are saying that because of that necessity, um, there's too steep an angle from the building to the curb. Am I describing that accurately? Um, so what solution might a developer have to avoid that uh dangerous circumstance?
Well, I think it all relates to that they wanna drop off space off of Main Street to come into the entrance. There's lots of ways to ramp up to get into the building. They're trying to use the city right of way to adjust for that difference in height, which will impact what the city does with its right of way in the future.
But isn't it true that anybody coming in and out that entrance to the campus would face the same issues whether or not they got dropped off at the curb?
No, because the, the whole discussion was they wanted a smooth finish all the way up to the front door versus having some steps and ramps like you got out in front of City Hall here.
So you're saying, okay, so, so to do what you say, they would have to reduce the size of the building in order to add, well, they can't because, I mean.
Well, I, I don't wanna design it here. My point is we don't wanna impact the city's right of way with what we can do with it in the future in solving their onsite issue. They need to adjust theirs onsite. And there is, there will be ways to solve it. It's just not using the right of way to solve it.
Okay, I, do any of my fellow commissioners have thoughts on this?
I guess I, I do have some thoughts because the, I believe they mentioned it was about an 18 inch elevation difference um that we're having to deal with here. And if we essentially say that, you know, that, that needs to be reconciled from the private property limits in and leave the city right of way alone, I think that can be resolved via steps um that doesn't impact the city's right of way. Now, they still have the issue of, you know, having to get proper slope to get a ramp in there, but I think there's enough building length to be able to do that somewhere else along there.
And another part of it, it could be parts of a retaining wall. The other part of it is the city has an established lighting pattern that lights the sidewalk and they serve as pedestrian lights. They serve, serve as streetlights. It has a street pattern that it follows and this wants to modify that.
Yeah, and that's, I guess that's one of the issues that I, I think I take with this solution is the sense that, um, that the verbiage you use actually was very good in the sense that we're, we're allowing the use of city property and right of way to solve a private property design issue. And while it may not seem that it's that much of an issue, I think the reality is, as much as I would love to believe this building's gonna be here for an eternity, there may come a day where that building will no longer be there and yet the city right of way is still saddled with their engineering solution for that private property. So that, I, to answer your question, I still have a little bit of consternation about this planter issue. Mayor Fordy.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know, maybe Mr. Leo, Mr. Twing, you can answer this, but, you know, if they were to come after the fact, they would look at saying, hey, look, we would like, we think we have a better design that will orient the campus a little bit better, solve a problem for us and we'd like to use the city right of way to do it. We'd like to enter into a license agreement. Here's what we'll do, we're gonna change the right of way to build this thing, uh, this planter box and it's gonna solve some issues and, you know, we want a 10 year, 20 year lease, whatever on it. Is there any, I mean, to reserve that option in the future instead of like a, I mean, if the design is in the city right of way, do we, do we recuse ourselves in the future of making any decisions to reclaim that property or forcing them to change it? Or is it, once we approve the site plan, you know, in a way we've created an eternal de facto license agreement? Or can we approve the site plan pending a license agreement with the city to enter into for that property for the design and for the purpose? If I'm making sense at all.
No, I, I understand exactly what you're saying and I've come across this issue before in the past where developers have wanted to take advantage of some of city property or city right of way in order to address some of their onsite private improvements. The concern that I expressed to this commission about using your regulatory approval of the planning commission and then yet then the city commission using its, its legislative approval to issue a license is that that license can be revoked for, it, it's not permanent. A license can be revoked. If that were to occur, the danger is, or the concern is that if that is revoked in the future, you have now caused them to be out of compliance. And so that creates a later issue and potential legal issues as to how to rectify that. What would the college have to do to try to get back that, that right to be able to use the city's right of way? And so we know that that could, you know, the possibility or the, the most likely outcome would be a possible litigation. That, that is, that is, that is one of the dangers. So when you're using both sources of authority and if something in the future happens, we can't predict what would happen 10, 15 years from now and in this, and you all brought up one scenario of what could happen. If, if it goes away, they are now out of compliance with the site plan approval. And technically, we could go, you know, require the compliance of them and you get into a dispute with OCC in the future.
So to, to protect against that, I mean, could you say, because Mr. Twing's saying there's an alternative, right? There's another way you could design it that doesn't enter into the right of way, whether that's steps or whether it's some sort of, it's probably not as aesthetically pleasing. It probably, but there is a physically mechanical alternative to this that Mr. Twing is saying. Is there a way to set it up to say, um, you know, site plan approved with, you know, so long as there is a agreement with the city commission? If not, then it, it, you know, diverts itself back to another design that does not, you know, go onto the city right of way approved by the administration. You know, because the alternative is to say no and then it defaults to that position.
Right.
Or if you can say, yes, and if that license ever, if that agreement ever expires in 10 years, 20 years, whatever, for whatever reason the city may have, we may wanna, I mean, who knows? You know what I mean? Things pop up. I don't see it happening. But then there's a backup plan that reverts to, you know, the conversion of that space that is out of the right way. Because, I mean, if you're raising the floors and there's no other alternative, I think that that is a big future risk. If we said, get rid of it, and then they're like, I can't get to my building. But if there is a alternative, albeit less pleasing, you know, not as great in the eyes of OCC, if that was an option down the road and that license were to expire and we were all gone and for whatever reason someone wanted to turn Main Street sidewalk into a roller derby, I don't know, you know, I'm just making something up, um, that there would be an alternative to, you know, remove it when that license expires and return it back, similar to, um, like outdoor cafes, right? You know, you can remove it, there's an alternative. You can bring the equipment back inside, there's a cost, you gotta move it and lift it up and do all that stuff, but there's a reasonable, if both parties agree, a reasonable alternative.
The, the, the difference between the outdoor cafe in this scenario is that they would have to plan to, in their site plan as a contingency, as part of the approval, what that fallback or, or plan B would be as part of the site plan approval. You, they would have to determine that today because you can't do that in the license agreement. The license agreement is just granting them the authorization to use the right of way. They, they would have to have already that plan as to, well, if, if this happens in the future, then this, this, the outcome is to resort to plan B. So it, it, it gets, that, you know, it's a very creative idea, but putting the, the onus on the petitioner or the, the applicant to come up with that plan right now, I, it, it won't be resolved this evening. Is, I mean, I'm sure there's some architectural and engineering that they would have to do in order to do that onsite.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, at the picture in the presentation and the flooding risk that they've shown us is further west on Seventh Street around the loading dock area. Um, and, and I'm, I'm trusting that their diagram is accurate and they're, they're not forecasting flooding issues on um Main Street. And so, I mean, and I, I, I think they can solve this problem. I mean, if they need greater elevation at the western end of the building where the flooding is imminent, that's fine. I suspect that with grading or something, they could find a way to reduce the floor height on the eastern end of the building and reduce the, the, the risk of um slanting out the, onto the sidewalk. That's just my own mostly ignorant speculation, but, but I'm, I'm inclined to agree with the staff that it's not our problem.
Mayor Fordy.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's not our problem, but it's also our problem if, you know, we command that they do something that is, I mean, there's no advantage. Uh, the advantage that they have presented with the design here is actually an advantage for the community, I believe, because you are making that Main Street elevation more aesthetically pleasing. You're using um grades and grass or grades and, you know, garden to um address an issue to make it safer and, and, and nicer. And the absence of that, I fear, will be something industrial, you know, not as nice and won't look as good because there's no advantage for them to say, oh, I want to say, I wanna annex this property for, you know, profit. I mean, that's not their goal here, clearly. Um, so yes, there's that concern if we ever wanna repurpose the land, which is my only concern. Frankly speaking, I think the design looks really nice. I think the um approach is really good and I understand it messes our street pattern light up a little bit, but I also think that this corner is really different and activated and you're gonna have some, you know, that light almost, if it's recessed or moved out or whatever, creates dimension to get people to walk through or, you know, like a, like a um fish fly go to the light a little bit, you know, and kind of encourage them to walk in. So I don't have a problem with it. The only problem that I have, um, and I don't know if it's a huge issue, is, you know, the city's future right to, um, if we had a, a really, which I think is like 0.0001%, but if we had to use that right of way, what is the consequence? Would we have to pay, we'd have to say, hey, we want that right of way back and then we would be responsible for remediating the property to make it compliant? I mean, what's the, or do we totally waive that right?
No, typically, the license agreements that I've been involved with, I can't say I have as much here that the city rolled out, but those typically, when they are granted and they're being, they, they terminate by, either by the terms or the duration or the term of the agreement or uh by some action that causes a revocation, it's usually, uh, the burden is placed on the licensee to restore the premises back to its, you know.
But we would, in this particular case though, Mr. Leo, we wouldn't have, like, as presented to us, we wouldn't have a license agreement, correct? It would just be, their, their site plan would be under the right of way in perpetuity? Or it would, there would be a license plan with the, a license agreement associated with this site plan, that it's contingent upon a successful license agreement?
Yeah, and you can, you can do that separately. I just, it is, there, you know, I expressed a concern. The other thing that I did leave out is in the future, uh, changes happen in roadway construction. There's maybe in the future, which is, is occurring in other parts of the country, uh, the requirement for accessible on-street parking spaces, which would require a greater portion of the sidewalk to be torn into, to cut into, which then might leave you with not enough width to have a accessible sidewalk for handy accessibility purposes. So those kinds, you know, I can't predict the future. I just, I can only let you know that um there is probably a bit of more risk than normally when we do enter these license agreements simply because this is an actual development that is being approved in connection with the, the commission's legislative authority to grant it the license to meet the compliance.
But what if, what if we didn't do a license agreement and this plan went forward? And 20 years from now, we have to do a curb cutout for accessible parking or something and that would necessitate the removal of this um planter and redesign, regardless of the cost, like who pays for what? Do we have the statutory um ability to demand that, like, hey, guys, you gotta move it? It's our, you know, we approved the site plan, but something changed. It doesn't mean you're not without damages that you can pursue from us, like to restore, whatever. I just, to me, the money isn't, because the money is tied to the risk, right? To me, it's the right that I wanna make sure if we have to, to do something. I don't wanna be tied up where like we need to do something on Main Street because it's the right thing to do or because it's demanded on us and then it's like, well, we can't do it because, you know, the site plan. So I guess what I'm asking, even though they're building onto the site plan, do we, that's still our property, that's still our right of way and we still have the ability to control it, but even, but they could come after us for damages if we decided to change it in the future and we would just have to make them whole for the fixes.
That's possible and, you know, I don't know, administrations change, commissions change. In the, you know, they could, uh, we could end up in a litigation where they try to actually, uh, as part of the remedy, to actually acquire the property as part of that. And so it's, I, I, I really, I see the, the, the intent, you know, and, and the base, the reasoning that you're behind it, that you're making and I, I don't disagree. I, from the practical side, I, I totally understand what you're trying to do. But as, as your legal counsel, I do have to advise you of the legal risk of such an action. It, you, again, just to, so that everybody understands my role, I provide legal advice to, to the planning commission as well as the city commission. But that is what it is, it's legal advice. Once I give that, then it's up to the body, the governing body, in this case, the planning commission, to weigh that advice as part of their decision. You know, they may follow it, they may not. That is their choice, that is their decision and I, I'm not gonna lose any sleep, I will tell you that. But, uh, because I, you know, I, I see that you, you see a greater good to allow this that may, may um be of a higher priority than the legal risk that, or you're willing to accept the legal risk in order to achieve something, a, a community benefit or, or something to improve the public health and safety of the city. I, I certainly understand that.
And we're saying with these risks and everything, we still have the ability to at least make a case to say, we have to make a change, you guys have to make a change. And it could go to litigation or it could be resolved or it could be made whole, so.
Yes.
There's been, it's not like the white, the, the right is completely eliminated. Like, there's an argument for the city to say, we're making changes on Main Street. We're putting in a trolley, you know, for public transit on the, you know, BRT. I mean, I don't know, maybe Royal Oak will be 600,000 people. don't know, maybe we're locally 600,000 people. It's such a great place to live, you know? And then they'll say, "Well, what about this?" And I don't want, like, you know, this little garden and slope thing to stop a major impro, again, many, probably decades from now. I just, as long as we still have that right, it doesn't mean it won't be litigated, doesn't mean that we wouldn't have to make the college whole on a, on a redesign. I'm okay with that financial risk. I just want to make sure we still at least have a basis of argument to say, "Well, it's still our right-of-way. We have to make modifications," sort of a non-eminent, eminent domain in a way.
Well, rather than trying to design it here tonight, can I suggest that you simply modify Item 4 to indicate that the, the current plan is, is, will be modified pursuant to an acceptable design to the city engineer? And then you don't need a license agreement. You don't need anything with it. Part of the other concern on these planter boxes that are four inches up, is my understanding, or vary a little bit, is I'm not sure how people will get to the parking meters. I'm not sure how people will get out of their car and get to the sidewalk. When we've had raised things next to the curb in the past, they've created all kinds of problems. Everything from opening a door to somebody driving, you know, into it. So, there's a lot of design issues and access issues that this plan's not acceptable to.
I just want to get one quick thought out. Ms. Beeky, I'll throw it to you. I just want to, I guess, make sure that we proceed with caution on this particular topic, because, you know, a relaxation of city engineering standards in the right-of-way, especially on Main Street, to facilitate private development, if it's granted here, the concern is how many other projects may come forward where they've realized, "Oh, we can, you know, for whatever economic reasons they may have, or other design reasons they may have, purposefully designed their building elevation, first-floor elevation," with the understanding that we're willing to negotiate or willing to be flexible with our city engineering standards when it comes to the right-of-way. I'm not saying the solution that they proposed is a terrible solution. I'm just very concerned that it's, it's a solution that involves the city right-of-way to solve the property problem. So, just want to throw that out there. Ms. Beeky?
Um, I, I was going to say something to that effect, and you said it much better than I was going to. And also, again, I, I made a, I asked a question at the beginning. We need wider sidewalks in our downtown. We need wider sidewalks for accessibility, both for people walking abreast of each other, sometimes coming from parking, crossing the street. And aesthetically, I like very much how this looks, but if I were walking down that street and I see these different zigzags, and the idea of dropping off someone from a car, it diminishes my experience just to walk down the street, past the building. I think of people who are pushing strollers with kids. Again, our sidewalks tend to be too narrow in, in Royal Oak, and I'm, I'm regretful that our Main Street work right now is not widening our sidewalks, but that didn't come before us, and we don't have that in our works. And so, as much as I like the aesthetics of this, my concern would be both the functionality and access, and then taking our staff's point and engineering, I think there has to be a different kind of solution for this, this particular situation. And again, I dream of the day that right-of-way becomes wider, and there's bike lanes, and there's not four lanes of traffic, but we're not there yet. But, but I appreciate the softening effect, and I'd like to see some kind of landscaping stay put, but I'm not sure that this is the right situation, even though I appreciate all of the discussion about the height differences, all of that. I'd like to see with some walk, walkability integrated into this concept.
Another question. Mayor Ford? Yeah, nothing precludes the applicant from, if this goes, you know, for this particular element doesn't go the right way, from coming to the city commission afterwards and making their case, if they work out something different with the planning department, correct? And if, if it does require a little bit of eas, a little bit of licensing of the right-of-way, and you guys are okay with it, they can come later and make an adjustment, correct?
Well, there's no, no basis in my mind for this to go to the city commission.
Well, if you need to get a license on the right-of-way, then we have to sign off on that, don't we?
Yes.
That's what I mean. Like, if they come in, they have to encroach on it for whatever design you come up with that makes sense for both parties, then they could come at a later date.
But generally speaking, unless there's some liability issue, we wouldn't get into a licensing agreement.
Okay.
I mean, oh, sorry.
Ms. Beeky?
I mean, in other situations with the site plan, we have asked people to come back in four weeks or a month and, and provide, I mean, having listened to this discussion, we've had a good conversation. We have, we have the big full team, and, and we've heard there's still in discussion. But so, what would be the downside of asking for some revisions pertinent to this discussion, without a, without a full thumbs up, thumbs down, but rather ask, look for these modifications as that?
I don't believe anybody's done engineering designs on the shared construction documents, so there's, I'm not sure you've got a review to come up with a final design. So, how long are you going to postpone it, is my question?
Well, I don't know. I don't know. I think in other cases, we ask some revisions.
I think the simplest solution is to kick it to the city engineer to work with them on a final design that works for both the city and the applicant.
I'd like the petitioner an opportunity to, I guess, address the, the notion of potentially coming back with some modified design.
Is there a specific question?
Well, I think the question really was, I guess, the, the willingness to take some of the discussion that's been had up here today back and come back to us with a modified design relating to this, this right-of-way entry issue. Is that something you guys would be willing to consider, or would you like us to still consider, continue to move forward tonight?
Well, I'll, I'll just make the, the quick clarification. Essentially, the, the barrier-free traveled way lines up with the ramp that you see at the, at the northeast corner of the site. That has to have a maximum 2% cross slope. That's code. Toward the street side of that, it'll pitch off at 4%. And it happens in other places in the city. The solution sometimes is to put in a double curb, let the slope be what it is. We can do that. And we can have trees and the five-by-five planters flush to grade, all paved. We can do that. We just think that there's a better opportunity to make a softer plaza space, a safer condition at the edge. In addition to that, the notion that trees need a certain rooting zone to reach full maturity. When they're in a five-by-five coffin, they live about seven years and they die. So, having a shared rooting zone allows the trees to get much bigger, which helps to scale the street, scale the building. So, there's a positive on two sides. And then in addition to that, the idea of draining water into it is a good, good suggestion. So, all those things...
Can I ask a question? Is there a reason those planters can't be on your property?
Well...
Move them, move them over three feet. Put them on your property.
The planter, there is a planter on the property.
Move them from here over to here.
Sorry?
Not have any prob, not have any planters on the, on the city's right-of-way. That's the question.
Just move it over.
Just move them somewhere in your plan.
Move this one over. Move them all over.
Well, the...
You get your same grade change.
The issue is to accommodate the grade change, but also to create that plaza space that we've talked about, that is something that is, generally feels level, doesn't feel like it's on a significant...
But you can start with whatever grade point you need to start at with your planter box.
Sure. We, we can look at a lot of different solutions. We've already talked about a couple is, with our engineering staff, and feel like this is the best recommendation, but, you know, there's opportunities for other ramps. There's opportunities for steps. We're trying to make it as barrier-free as possible, and in that regard, we think it's a win-win.
So, I take it he doesn't want to wait?
Well, I, I think it's a really positive solution. I recognize some of the concerns of being brought up. I, I'll speak for the, the college that I don't think anybody's going to claim this property over long-term and say it's ours. To me, it's just a simple solution of addressing a grade issue. We had talked with the engineering department. Right now, Main Street comes from a high point at the center line of the street. It slopes all the way to the curb line that we see. We asked this engineering department to consider putting a rundle on the driveline and then lift the grade back toward the curb. That would solve the problem. But unfortunately, they're far enough along with what they've done. It was not possible. That would be a really good solution. It would soften grades, make everything work better. Maybe somewhere in some future address of Main Street, that might come back into play, but we're dealing with what we have right now in terms of the existing petition.
Okay, thank you. I guess we'll continue to move forward tonight, then.
I, I, a quick question. So, the, as we look at this drawing, the, I just, for Mr. Twink, I guess, the big square green box is on their property?
That's correct.
The, it's just the planters along the curb that are in the public right-of-way?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought they were all in the public. I thought that was the, the point of concern.
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
I have a different comment about another one of the concerns with regard to the, if the loading area goes to where the, the applicants would like, and this issue with the pedestrian crosswalk. I'm wondering, most of the time, the driveway will not be occupied by any way, shape, or form, not even used. And so, I'm wondering, can't, is it feasible that the walk, crosswalk actually be in or adjacent to the driveway if it's a low-use space, if it's properly, like, striped, simply because it's easy to walk in and out of driveways? And if, again, if you're a heavy walker, you walk around all the time, where you do crosses into driveways because it's easiest place to go, it's often better than the crosswalk because the crosswalk is closer to traffic on corners. And at our new city hall crossing to the new park, for example, if you leave the farmer's market and the city hall driveway, which is often blocked on Saturday for the farmer's market, you walk through the driveway as a pedestrian, but then you go to the crosswalk where the curb and the pedestrian cuts are, and actually, it's not wide because it's not a full driveway, and that's, that's the hazard because you can't continue? And, and again, this may be thinking way out of the bounds of what was on the paper, but to me, that crosswalk can be functional, even though there's a driveway there, as long as the driveway's 90% of the time not being used, if that makes any sense whatsoever. And I'm just commenting on that, addressing Mr. Twink's concern that that language had to be changed, and, and I think the functionality could work okay. Anyway, I prefer smaller trucks, but again, I'm, I'm leaving that out of the discussion.
Yes, on that area of the, of the building, I do have a question for Mr. Twink. You had mentioned that there were discussions with staff of alternatives to how that truck bay could function. Can you elaborate on that a little bit, just so I can be a little bit more informed?
Well, I think the simplest way is, from the planning standpoint, you'd take the first floor and flip it, put all the functional elements on the inside of the building, and you'd access the loading bay from the inside of their parking lot. All of the dead space along 7th Street would be on the inside of the building. All the windows for the office and other functions would be on the 7th Street side. So, from the planning staff standpoint, we would simply flip the first floor to the other direction, so you're not using 7th Street for the backside deliveries. You're using the inside of their property.
I see. Thank you. Pressure on this.
Yeah, so to Ms. Beeky's point, I might be inclined to favor a Section 3 of the staff contingencies that says that the applicant will coordinate with the city engineering department to sign and stripe the area in the most beneficial way.
I mean, I think that would be relatively indifferent to the applicant, as long as there's just a good way of doing it.
And then they propose. They suggested, she suggested, in fact, that striping could be used there to, to help reduce risk.
See. Was there a calibrating that if the loading dock stayed where it was, the crosswalk would need to move somewhere along?
It would be part of that, that discussion.
Okay.
Find the best places for crosswalk or crosswalks based on angles of trucks, and, and to add signage to it might be necessary.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Question for Mr. Twink. So, the, the staff's preference for the flipping the first floor, is that the second rendering that they showed us with the trucks going through their internal parking lot?
Well, staff's recommendation is to get rid of the loading bay in that area.
So, so we haven't seen, what you're recommending, we haven't seen presented as an option?
No, because I don't present a plan. I only react to what's provided.
I understand that. I mean, it's not incorporated into what they've presented to us.
That's correct.
Okay. You're just articulating it right now. Okay. So, that's an option that would have to be explored in a different manner for us to, to see it.
I think the petitioner ought to make a comment.
Sorry. I'm Chris Vogelheim from HED. I just wanted to bring up the, the planter, the discussion about the planters in the city right-of-way. We've just had some discussion. I apologize for timing this, but we would be willing to follow the, the city standards for those planters if they're located in the right-of-way, and we can certainly work out, still maintaining the entry plaza and some configuration and those sorts of things. So, I just wanted to make that offer up to you. If it's a area of concern, we did like the plan we presented, but we understand the concern, and, and we can certainly, within the right-of-way itself, follow back to the city standards, and, and we can certainly work out the entrance to your satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to try a motion. Let's see how this flies. All right. I move approval of the site plan with the following changes to staff recommendations. Removing Item Number 1. Um, no, wait. Removing Item Number 1. Item Number 2 would grant the applicant permission to go to the zoning board of appeals if they want a driveway width greater than 30 feet. Item Number 3 would say that the applicant will confer with the city engineer and stripe and sign the area in a way that meets the engineering departments, that satisfies the engineering department. Uh, items...
Can I add, and protects pedestrian safety or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
To protect pedestrian safety.
Because it's on a side street, yeah.
Yep. Um, Item 4 will remain. The planter boxes are out, and all of the other contingencies from the city through Item 13 as written.
Okay, so just to make sure that I got those correct. You wanted to remove Contingency 1, modify Contingency 2 to grant the petitioner's ability to go to ZBA for a driveway width greater than 30 feet. Item Number 3 to confer with the city engineer to design and stripe the pedestrian access at the truck bay for optimal pedestrian safety.
Well put.
And Item Number 4 is removed.
Nope.
No.
Nope.
Stays.
Stays as is.
Stays.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood that completely. Oh, very confused, sorry. Item 4 stays, and all the rest of the contingencies are as proposed as well.
Yes.
And the, since 1 has been removed, all paragraphs will be renumbered accordingly?
We've never done that before.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Is there support?
I do support the motion.
Mr. Curtis, any discussion?
Mayor Ford? Oh, and I appreciate staff's recommendations. I don't think they're wrong. I think eliminating 1 just makes more sense. It's always a judgment call, given the nature of the number of, I mean, it's all risk and management. Like, there's no good way to do it. I think it's the right way to go about it, given the other benefit, because folks attending the college are also either members of our community or temporary members of our community for the day. We want them to have a welcoming, you know, space where they can learn, and, you know, it really should be centered around people, not trucks. And, but I understand, you know, staff's recommendation on 1. I just think it's a good fit to remove it. The planters, you know, I think it was a great design. I understand the dynamics. If the team at HED thinks they have an alternative that, you know, keeps it looking nice and keeps that plaza environment, that welcoming energy, I mean, that's what we talked about, I mean, from the beginning, that we all got excited about, was opening up this campus. And as long as we can do that within the spirit of it, and for whatever reason, if we can't, I'm sure there's an option to circle back and say, "Yeah, we thought we could do it, but maybe we can't." But we'll let, maybe, staff and, and HED figure that out and see if we can have something that makes it a little bit more tolerable. So, I'll be supporting it, even though I think, I would have supported it if the planters were in there as well.
Any additional discussion, questions?
I'll use a comment... I just comment to, I really appreciate the discussion, appreciate the, the design and the work going into it, and as you move forward on, expand your campus as well as going through the details on how this is going to evolve, just to keep in mind, again, the sustainability features and the native plants, and we're really trying to lean into a whole new thinking, not just here in Royal Oak, but generally, for all of our sakes. And so whenever there's an opportunity to, you know, build something new, to do the best we can by the environment as well, it's going to pay us all back in the long term, as well as even adaptive reuse potentially of your, the structures in the front once they get vacated. Okay.
So before we take vote, I just want to make a few quick comments. I do want to acknowledge that the, the project that's been brought forward takes a less-than-optimal situation and, and does bring improvement to it. I think the, the changes that are happening to Main Street are good changes, being bound there on all four sides, the, the notion of where do you put a truck dock is going to be a challenge. I think the solution you've come up with is a reasonable one. Certainly, you could design this 1,000 different times and come up with better solutions, but I think what you've got is reasonable. In general, I think, you know, it's, it's a great project, it's going to activate a, you know, a corner parking lot that's, you know, right off of our Main Street, a primary spot of downtown, that I think is going to be a welcome addition. I'm slightly disappointed that sustainability wasn't a primary driver of the initial goals for the project, understanding that there's other, a whole host of other goals that are part of the steering committee's purview, but the fact that sustainability and incorporating sustainable elements are, and I don't mean this to be disparaging, are sort of after-the-fact thoughts is a little disappointing. I would prefer those to be primary drivers at the beginning, dictating project design amongst other primary drivers. But I will be supporting the, the project based on the motion that's on the table. So any other comments or discussion? With that, I guess we will take the vote. Mr. Curtis?
Aye.
I'm a yes.
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 Congratulations, the site plan has been approved unanimously. You do not need to come back.
Thank you.
I mean, we loved your presentation, it'd be nice for us to have you come back, but probably better things you could be doing on a Tuesday evening.
Thank you, thank you.
No, nice work, appreciate it. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Yay. Come to our city, you have no idea how wonderful it is.
So we will move on to the next agenda item, which is item E, other business. These are non-action items, more just informational. Mr. Twing, anything to say, do we just, it's...
Nope, just for your info.
It's a notice from the city of Ferndale on their master plan and the road commission's road report, so if there isn't any other...
I'll just make one comment, that the master plan that Ferndale has, we're ramping up, was worked on with Smith Group, so again, that might be a point of interest as we move on to our discussion next month.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second?
Second somewhere? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.